Like to call, to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, October 12, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission statement: We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Next up, number four on the agenda, public hearing regarding the district-wide school safety plan, 2022-2023. I'd like to turn it over to Patrick, please.
Thank you. So, this is our statutorily required public hearing on our 2022-23 district-wide safety plan. According to Education Law 2801 and Commissioner's Regulation, every school district in Bosse's is required to develop and annually update a confidential building-level plan, emergency response plan, and the district-wide school safety plan, which is what we're talking about right now. School districts are required to post their updated school-wide safety plan on the district website and allow for 30 days of public comment before adopting the plan and submitting to New York State Ed Department. So what's new as far as the plan requirements? On June 23rd, 2022, Governor Hochul signed Alyssa's Law, which requires schools to consider, not necessarily adopt, panic alarm systems as part of their district plan. The other piece was, district-wide safety plan must include provisions for remote instruction beginning next year, in 2324. And district-wide safety plans, forgive me, let me go back here. They, they must include protocols for responding to declared state disaster emergencies involving communicable disease. So, we have a provision in there that refers to our reopening plan for 2122, for anything that might come about, such as a communicable disease emergency. So what's specific to MW's plan? So we adopted the New York State Emergency Response Protocol, which is, has an acronym of Shell. So that is the shelter-in-place, hold-in-place, evacuate, lockout, and lockdown protocol. We had something slightly different previously, so we've updated that. We've talked about some of the other things we've done with the safety program. We're engaging the safety consultant to do a district-wide safety audit, reinforcing safety awareness and adherence to protocols, such as wearing your staff ID at all times, keeping doors, exterior doors locked, and not propping doors open, that sort of thing. And we're instituting additional and ongoing training regarding safety protocols and practices throughout the year. So are there any questions or comments regarding district-wide safety plan?
Any questions?
Quick question. Are, do we need additional funds to implement anything like that, that we could be getting from the state or should be getting from the state?
Well, we've, what we've done as far as some of the program changes for the current year is use the federal American Rescue Plan Act monies.
Okay.
So we use those monies to replace the classroom door locks, I've mentioned that many times. We're using those funds to institute a door access control system. So that's something that's sort of in process right now. We're also using some of those funds to replace the doors. We, as we evaluated locations for the door access control, and that's like a lock that can be, the door can be unlocked with a swipe card. So it enhances safety because doors are not propped open, they're not left open. People, you know, if you don't have a key, there's no requirement for a key, that sort of thing. So it's a, it's a nice safety enhancement, so using funds for that. And we're evaluating, using those monies for certain other things as well. So.
Thank you.
Can I just add one more thing? We should mention that back, I believe it was in June, we met with the MWTA union members. And we sat in a room and we talked about what are the things that we're concerned about. We also had administrators, members of the cabinet, and so they came up, we collectively came up with some things that we needed to do, some of the things you mentioned. And we do have a follow-up meeting coming sometime at the end of October, just to follow up. And I think that's a good conversation to have with our, all of our constituents, our, our staff members, to talk about ways that we can enhance our safety. So I just wanted to make mention that that's been a piece that we're doing and we're going to continue to do it.
Right.
What type of trainings will be provided for teachers and staff to make sure that they know the protocols and are familiar with the plan in order to act upon it should they need to?
Well, over the summer, and I mentioned these things as well, we had Frank Gugliari, who's the safety coordinator with Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse. So that, that's the group that's going to be conducting the safety audit. He did a presentation at our administrative retreat, so that was the district administrators and directors. He also did about a 90-minute session at our opening day. So everyone was there, it was very good. I've attended two sessions at Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse. Joe Tripodo, our Director of Safety, also was there at one of those sessions. So we're, we're talking to them about actually coming to, back to the district and doing some additional training. Went to an incident command training, so there's, there's a lot of material there. You know, there's a lot of things that Frank can handle personally or Putnam Northern Westchester can do. So it's, some of it will probably come, like, he's going to be here quite a lot as part of the safety audit. So as part of that, there might be recommendations about rolling that out as the year progresses.
Does it, does it have a, a public education side to it as well? Because I know when these things go into place, people are used to behaving a certain way and then things change and they, they react differently.
Uh huh. I think that probably does, Don. I think part of that would also be how we, you know, push out the plan, you know, using our website and, and, you know, other methods and means.
Fair. I thought the plan was very thorough and I appreciate all the work that you and the team put into it. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
So if there are no other questions, can I get a motion to approve the safety plan?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up is Board Member Appreciation Presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Every year, the state of New York sets aside a week for Board Recognition, a time for us to show appreciation for the individuals who volunteer their time and expertise in service to the students and families of Monroe Woodbury. While Board Recognition Week will officially take place from October 17th to the 21st, we are honoring our board members a bit earlier this year. This Recognition Week provides an opportunity to focus on the crucial role an elected Board of Trustees plays in our communities and schools. Their actions and decisions affect the present and the future lives of our children. In honor of Board Recognition Week, Central Office has made a donation to Our Father's Pantry, a local food pantry serving members of our community who are in need. The important fundamental work this organization does each day in providing food for those who are struggling reflects the care and compassion much needed in today's world. Their legacy of love and support for those in need has a ripple effect throughout our community. Now, I would like to welcome Sapphire Elementary Principal Caitlin Caldwell, who will introduce a special, a special message for our board from our students and staff. Thank you.
Keep it short, I promise. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned, my name is Caitlin Caldwell and I'm the principal at Sapphire Elementary School. Each October, we take time to show gratitude to our Board of Education trustees. Historically, each school has adopted one or two trustees and bestowed upon them swag. We thought, though, this year that maybe you have enough water bottles and sweatshirts and coffee mugs. And in the spirit of change that the last couple of years have brought upon us, why not change it up? So, this year, we thought we would pivot to something a little less traditional, but no less meaningful. What is a legacy? Is it a moment in time which lasts indelibly in the hearts of few? Is it a sustained commitment to bettering the lives of many? Is it a willingness to ask the difficult questions, to challenge traditions with innovation and a fresh perspective? The truth is, your legacy is all of those things and so much more. It is a commitment and it is effort, the fruits of which extend far beyond the time you're in a given position, role, or title. As our Board Trustees, our students, former, current, and future, are your greatest legacy. They carry the power of Monroe Woodbury Central School District into the world and make it a better place, one step at a time. Your legacy not only begins in our early childhood buildings, nor does it culminate with our students' graduation. It continues when MW graduates come back, raise their children here, become teachers here, become cabinet members here. Your legacy includes the faculty, support staff, custodial team, administrators, and cabinet members who you have selected to devote countless hours to loving and caring for our students. Because we do so to carry out the mission of our district. Simply put, to ensure that every childhood, child receives the best education possible. I could go on and on and on and on, as you well know, about what your legacy as trustees means to us. But I think it is best shared by those who are truly the experts. So without further ado, I present to you the feature film, "The Legacy of the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education."
So cute.
One, two, three. Thank you to the Board of Education. We are in year five of a seven-year plan to update and renovate all school libraries. In support of my program, there is both support of the special reviews, and they allow that to happen. You guys are awesome. I absolutely love this class. I have bested their class. Thanks so much. Me, I started as a Sapphire student in exams classes with a first grader.
I want to take a few moments to thank Board of Education for orchestrating the revised agenda for our new school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Ed, for providing us the opportunities to change kids' lives in positive way.
Thank you to the Board of Ed for everything that you've been doing and all the support. They showed music for me.
Thank you, Board of Ed.
This is Sapphire, and this is where your legacy begins.
The legacy continues at Siflo.
What do you think about the Board of Education?
Cameron.
Make one for us.
Can I make you a lunch?
Yes.
Like what, Cameron?
Like, like these are lucky tacos.
Yeah. Is that their favorite meal?
Yes.
Tacos?
Yes.
They do what?
Print papers.
Print papers? Print papers to who?
To the school. Do you want us to do? Take a list, create. To, to go to the library.
Really?
A bunch of teachers.
A bunch of teachers. What do you think the Board of Education?
It teaches us to read, know how to spell, and learn how to write.
Do you think the Board of Education does all that?
Yeah. It's fun stuff, like, like you play outside, you can play with games, make you, or buy a book, and.
Thank you very much for your presentation. The legacy continues right here at Central Valley.
The legacy of Pine Tree continues, and so the legacy continues at North Mill. And I'm not talking about this legacy.
Do you think we should have hair?
I was a Board of Education member. What I would say, or what I would like suggest to do.
And what is it?
I think we should have, like, more nutritious, like, options and, like, munch things. So, like, so, because, like, you know, we're the future, like. So, we need to be healthy, and then if we are healthy, then we grow up to be.
So, as you know, with Board of Education, and I do have some such questions. When I was in pre-k, I went apple picking and pumpkin picking, and those were field trips. And I also went to Lakeland. I was wondering if we could have more and bigger food.
We can, like, take, like, trips, like, almost everything, Wednesday and Friday.
Like twice a week, have a field trip?
Andrew.
Where would you go on a field trip?
Like, if there was a museum, we can go there, and the pizzeria. Something like that.
Those are great ideas, because who doesn't like pizza? Hey, pizza's awesome, right?
I would say, like, more activities for the holidays. Like, for example, like, for Halloween, we can maybe, like, wear costumes, like, to your school.
I would like to have my club, because if there's my club, there will be more people.
What are the most meaningful things that's happened to you here?
Like the best thing?
Yeah, the best thing.
Um, I would say that a lot of good things has happened to me, because this is a great school. But, um, the most meaningful is that I got to do this opportunity, I get this opportunity to speak right here.
The legacy continues from the middle school.
Dangerous education. If we could get better education than other schools do, and more opportunities.
Um, I'd say the most thing that I have fun with doing is, you know, being a part of stuff outside of the way. You know, soccer's pretty fun, or teammates and everything, we have a good time. Playing my instrument is nice, because you're part of an orchestra, so it feels like a group, it's community.
Now I'm in advanced classes, and they said to me that I can have credits for high school, and I'm so proud of it.
How do you like high school so far?
Uh, it's really nice. There's a lot of nice people, the teachers are great. It's very inclusive. All the clubs I have joined, they've helped me, like, be closer to more people.
Are you a Board of Education member? Just say you were a Board member. What would you, what would you want to add or change or?
Um, I feel like I would want to change maybe, like, the ten ten rule.
I would like the ten ten rule.
You can't go to the bench for the first time.
Maybe, I think, what about five five?
Danica.
I would probably change the ten ten. I just think, like, missing the middle class to go to the back. To miss the beginning or the ending, because usually that's not when much instruction is given.
I guess if I could change something, I'd make the, the day I made the school stop here.
When you look back at the little, when you look at it.
I would say, uh, it was one, it was one of the best, really, this is one of my best memories I ever had.
The most important part about, um, the Board of Education is kind of like creating a sense of community that brings all of us together, and I think the Board of Ed does like a really good job of that, like, making sure they accommodate for, like, the needs of people in the high school and middle school and elementary schools, and making sure, like, we all just have that, like, sense of community.
Um, just thank you for all, like, the opportunities that we get. Like, I got into algebra and I, like, had to pay or anything, it's just like. Like, everyone has a chance, like, to do other things, so just thank you for, like, the opportunities.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, honestly, without them, high school would be pretty.
And teenagers are probably, like, the most annoying population. Or, like, how they die. So, yeah, thank you for putting all that stress into us.
I definitely think they're doing a good job at, like, the structure that they provide for us, but I think they do a really good job of making sure everyone has the nice powers.
Thank you, Board of Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Ed.
Thank you.
So, um, I want to extend a very special thank you to the administrative team for your support in putting this together. And especially to Carol Spendly, Prudence Thurston, and Noreen Guerra, for the innumerable hours you've spent collecting our students' priceless wisdom and their thoughts. And in celebration of your commitment to us as trustees, you have all received a mini album of all the students who participated. So, thank you all. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you. That was great. Thank you, Ms. Caldwell, and the team that put that together. It was really fun to watch. Next up is approval of the revised agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the revised agenda, please?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we have questions or concerns from interested citizens. We have four tonight. First one, and pardon me if I don't get your last name exactly right. Alicia Pavagnano?
Standing in support. Good evening, Board of Ed Trustees and Cabinet Members. My name is Alicia Paviano, and I'm the current Vice President of the High School PTSA. I am here representing myself and the other members of the High School PTSA Executive Board. The following that I will read is a letter that was sent to the Board of Ed, Superintendent Rodriguez, and the Cabinet on October 4th regarding a policy meeting held on September 30th. I'm reading this letter because I feel the community needs to be in the know as to what is being proposed. Good morning, Mr. Siriello. It has come to the attention of the High School PTSA Executive Board that a policy meeting was held on Friday, September 30th, 2022, with members of the Board of Education. It has further come to our attention that at this meeting, Mr. Don Beeler took it upon himself to add a clause in the current policy stating that a Board of Education trustee cannot hold an executive board position on a PTA as he feels it is a conflict of interest. This clause affects only one person on the current Board of Education, and that is Mrs. Dawn Talber, who is the president of the High School PTSA. If this clause goes into effect, it will force Mrs. Talber to resign as the president. And as you may or may not realize, without a president, a PTA must be disbanded. As the other members of the Executive Board, we are in no position to take on the role of president. We were slated for our current positions because those are the positions we chose to run for. Therefore, if this policy does go through, resulting in Mrs. Talber resigning, please understand that we, as a board, will be collectively resigning our positions as well. Mrs. Talber is not only our president, but she also brings to our PTSA a wealth of knowledge that she would be passing on to us, so that we would be able to continue doing our work for students in years to come. We hope you understand that without a PTSA at the high school, students, especially our seniors, will miss out on many activities and experiences that are provided by the PTSA. Our seniors have already had to endure enough disappointment over the last few years due to COVID restrictions. As the Board of Education, you are expected to work for the benefit of the students. The Board is in place for the betterment of public education. By adding this clause, you are not doing what is best for the students, and unfortunately, they will be the ones who suffer the consequences of your actions. To further that, we, as the board, would like to know how Mr. Beeler feels there is a conflict of interest by holding both positions. People are not knocking down doors to volunteer on the PTA. The opposite is the reality. It is so hard to find people to not only fill board positions, but also to just volunteer at events and activities. So someone holding both a Board of Ed position and a PTA position should not be an issue, especially if you find someone who is willing to selflessly volunteer their time for the benefit of our students. We don't really think you understand the full magnitude of what you have proposed. In addition, it is very sad for us to think that a policy change like the one proposed is what is uppermost in your mind. We would like to think that your efforts could be better focused on other more important and pressing issues facing our district. We strongly disagree with your proposal and feel consideration of this proposal will do more harm than good for this district. Please reconsider your actions and do better.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Board of Education Trustees and Cabinet. My name is Bernie Vega and I'm a speed reader. I'm currently the Monroe Woodbury PTA Council President and District-Wide Special Education PTA Co-President. As the High School PTSA Vice President stated, we are to say, at the very least, disappointed by the actions of the Board of Ed trustee to intentionally disrespect the PTA president by driving out an elected official of a critical position in our PTA community. In today's world, post-pandemic, no one is knocking on an imaginary PTA door to volunteer for a leadership position that require enough voice for what is right for all children, grit, and diplomacy to navigate the surprise roadblocks we encounter every day. What a disconnect between select trustees and the relationship impact, daily collaboration, drive, and value that the building-level PTAs and SEPTA have in our district, culture, and community. Instead of focusing our energy on what appears to be a personal vendetta, internally created distractions that have impacted highly affected functions of our PTA units and council, who share closely aligned goals in our community, let's redirect that focus on other pressing issues all schools with similar profiles are facing these days. Today, our presidents here are gathered in support of Dawn Talber as the High School PTSA dedication to the students and responsibility to the HSPTSA. Trustees, do you know what it takes to supervise and counsel all-night grad parties for several years, even when your child isn't the one graduating? The red tape that comes with insurance and anticip, unanticipated roadblocks. Do you have any idea how much family and self-care time is sacrificed so that you can guide future leaders in the community to bring speakers within budgets and simultaneously ignore the negative criticism while keeping your focus on the end result? Positive experiences for the children of Monroe Woodbury and their families. The council and PTA units are requesting a full abandonment of a discussion of such a policy change altogether. This policy would essentially do more than, more harm than good by limiting access of interested community members from participating in either role. Furthermore, as council president, I am seeking a statement of reinsurance for our district PTAs that this policy will not be pursued. A failure of the Board to respond to this matter by the next public meeting will result, will result in potential actions by PTA board members to potentially include resignation of some executive board positions, and the impact of that is unknown, as something as such as that has never happened in this district. Also, before coming here, I noticed minutes were filed. How does that public ensure, how does the public ensure accuracy with that? And now Andrea Abergani, Pine Tree President, will read a message from the New York State PTA President Dana Platon and Cal Balakapitsky Esquire.
Hi, I'm Andrea Abergani. I'm going to read this, uh, letter from the New York State PTA. Dear Monroe Woodbury School Board, the New York State Congress of Parents and Teachers, Inc., is honored to represent the families of our 2.6 million schoolchildren and over nearly 250,000 members. It is our mission to make every child's potential a reality and support every child with one voice. We write to formally oppose any school board policy which would limit election as a Monroe Woodbury School Board member if they serve as an officer of a PTA affiliated with the school district, building, or community. The New York State Legislature, acting with the New York State Governor for enactment and the State Education Department for implementation, has the sole power and/or authority for detailing the requirements for serving a New York State School Board member. The accept, expectations, limitations, and requirements for school board services is clearly prescribed in law. This can be found in New York State Education Law, Article 51a tal, and New York State Education Law, Article 52a tal. To believe that a local school board can act with legislative authority in a conflict with state law is erroneous. The legislature clearly and by president has authority over these matters. Further, it is wholly alarming that this matter has the appearance of targeting our local PTA in your school district. While this may not be the intent, it can be seen that your draft policy on its face and by application is targeting PTA service in your school district. We find this unacceptable. New York State PTA is the largest and oldest child advocacy organization in New York State. This is our 126th year of serving New York's children, families, and educators. We are seen as the premier parent and family association, serving as vice chair to the prestigious New York State Educational Conference Board, a meaningful partner with our State Education Department, and a true collaborator with our sister education associations. Most importantly, our PTA units in Monroe Woodbury is wholefully successful and a true and meaningful partner with your school district. The PTA units recently have or will host a trunk-or-treat to provide a safe place for students, offer a Halloween costume drive to save families from purchasing costume, promote a childcare awareness, support significant arts and education programs, including hosting plays for students, hosted a school board meet-the-candidate nights for informed voting for the community, hosted a used clothing and household drive to support their community, participated in the PTA Arts Reflection Program, participates in the New York State PTA Picker Reading Partner Program to support literacy, promotes and supports food services and free meals for school and community, supports programs for special education and autism awareness, and the list goes on. Our PTA unit, your PTA, is separately incorporated 501(c)(3) organization. While they operate in cooperation with your school district, they formally operate under our New York State PTA rules and state and federal rules and laws governing not-for-profit organizations. Your district already has detailed conflict of interest policy, which is supported by your association, the New York State School Boards Association, per their board guidance. the New York State School Boards Association per their board guidance, easily found online or in suggested board policy. We certainly support conflict of interest policies as well. We do not, however, support nor believe it legal your attempt to prohibit school board members from serving as PTA officers or PTA officers serving as school board members. We formally ask you to abandon this draft board policy and continue to work in collaboration with the great PTAs in your district. As always, New York State PTA stands ready to work collaboratively to support all children and families, and we look forward to our future plans in family engagement and collaboration. We are available at any time by contacting our Executive Director, Kyle Blakowski, at execdirector@nyspta.org. Sincerely, Dana Platten and Kyle Blakowski.
Thank you. We have Casey Capen next.
I don't feel like I can talk that fast, but that was... Good evening, everyone. My name is Casey Capen and I am the Executive Vice President of the MWTA. As we are almost halfway through October, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank various groups across our district that have made the start of our school year a success. Thank you to the Board of Education, as of course, tonight's Board of Education Appreciation Night. We appreciate your dedication to our students, staff and our community. Another group I would like to acknowledge tonight is the PTA. Thank you to our PTAs from Sapphire, Smith Clove, North Main, Central Valley, Pine Tree, our middle school, our high school, and of course, our district-wide SEPTA. Often volunteering, whether it is on the Board of Education or the PTA, is a thankless job. But I would really like to take this opportunity to thank the PTAs and SEPTA for all the wonderful things they do for our students K through 12. Whether it's organizing a book fair, a food drive, gathering winter apparel, bringing in an assembly to enrich our students' learning environment, organizing school dances or planning field day, the students and staff of MW appreciate all the time and effort you put into it. Currently, the K-5 PTAs are working with the MWTA to collect new or used Halloween costumes. Please consider looking through your closets or attics for anything you may be willing to part with. Events are going to be held throughout the district on October 20th at the K-5 buildings for families to come out and pick out a Halloween costume, free of charge, of course. If you haven't joined the PTA or SEPTA yet, it's not too late. Thank them tonight yourself with a membership. Links can be found on our district website. Parents who volunteer their time to the PTA, especially in leadership roles, do it because they want to support our children and their children's schools. Their efforts are often unrecognized and unsung because they are not doing it for kudos. They want their kids to have the best experience they can possibly have. We appreciate, we are appreciative and in admiration of their tireless dedication to doing what is right on behalf of students, even when some may seek to make that job more difficult. We're grateful to be partners with all the PTAs and SEPTA as we work together to support the education of every child. Whether we are a part of the PTA, the Board of Education, the MWTA, the MWEA, the CSEA, or a member of our administrative team, let's all focus on our students, focus on the goals we have for our learners and continue to serve the Monroe Woodbury community by doing what is best for kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no updates for any questions or comments from prior meetings. Next up, approval of the September 28th minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question regarding the policy committee minutes that were submitted.
Sure.
I don't know if this is the right time on the agenda to ask it or wait till we discuss policy. We've never had it come up, so I'm not sure when the right time is to address it.
I'll defer to you since we've not had it come up.
It was just mentioned, but I did notice that the policy minutes were updated to the board docs, and I'd like to know what the format is to disagree with those. We've never had it happen, so I don't know what the policy is on that or what the procedure is on that, but what was written, in my opinion, is not accurate. I won't speak for anybody else, but...
Do they say draft? I haven't...
I agree with Stacy. They're inaccurate.
They don't say draft. They're posted in board docs already.
If they don't say draft, I would recommend that they come down because then they haven't been reviewed by the committee.
That's reasonable. Yeah, honestly, I don't think we knew the procedure for doing it, so it's merely...
We didn't really have one in place because it's never been lied about, so until now. So that's why it was...
It's never been lied about.
It's never been lied about. The minutes were always accurate.
What was in the minutes was not what happened.
You're accusing someone of writing lies? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that what was written in that document is not what happened.
It's inaccurate. Totally inaccurate.
Inaccurate is different than lying, though.
I'll change my word. It's inaccurate.
You want to call it a lie, call it a lie, but I'm just saying that's a kind of a pretty bold assertion to say.
It's bold. It's inaccurate.
And who takes the minutes?
That's a good question.
I did that. So if there's something that you feel like is inaccurate or a lie, please direct it at me.
Whoever. I don't know who did it.
During the policy meeting or here or afterwards. It doesn't matter. I'm pretty confident about what I wrote.
Okay, so again, I don't know what the procedure is to challenge it.
The minutes have been taken down. I just got confirmation, so they need to be looked at by the committee, and then you need to have a conversation, so that way the minutes can reflect the meeting.
I have a question. How is it determined in the committees who takes the minutes? Because it's never been my understanding that a committee member... We did not have a discussion at that first meeting as to who would take minutes. I was under the assumption that the superintendent has, past practice, has submitted the minutes. So I see that that was a change, but again...
It was my first policy meeting, so I don't know the procedure.
How did it come to be that a committee member took the minutes of a meeting rather than either the superintendent as past practice or the committee chair?
Good question. I didn't ask Elsie not to.
It's a simple procedural thing because I was asked, hey, when are the minutes going up? And I was like, Jamel, can you correct the minutes?
He asked me afterwards if I could put them together.
Yeah, so it wasn't some conspiracy or lie or anything else.
Oh, I didn't imply that it was either... I didn't imply it was either because I haven't said anything to the point yet, but I guess...
So we can discuss a proper procedure.
Mr. Siriello was saying, a review by the committee, to me, would be the way to go. I mean, again, it doesn't say submitted by Board member. I've never seen a Board member of a committee submit minutes.
So what we can do maybe going forward is to send out the minutes after the meeting, just make sure everyone's aware of everything on the board.
Going forward, we should decide who exactly is taking the minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm okay with that as well. If it has been Elsie in the past, you want to keep it like that, I'm fine with that. I don't really have a preference.
Well, I just know that when Elsie did the minutes, she would share them with the committee to say, this is what we discussed. Is there any comments or thoughts or questions? Or before, it's posted as an official document for the public to view.
I think that's fair. Yeah.
Thank you.
If that's, once again, it's my first policy meeting, so I don't know what the background has been. But if that's been the procedure and it's been working, I don't see a reason to change it.
I feel that a lot of policies, procedures have been changed recently without any discussion, and I think that's extremely disrespectful.
Okay. And that's fair, but once again, it was my first policy meeting, so I don't know what the...
But that's exactly my point. When somebody comes into a meeting for the first time and without ever finding out what's going on, what the workings of the committee were in the past, and just change things without any discussion.
Once again, you're saying...
That's disrespectful to people like me who have been on the policy committee for like six years.
So you're saying change. I'm saying I didn't know that there was a change because I was asked to put some points in.
That's exactly my point.
Yeah, we can figure that out.
There was no discussion for you to know that there was change being made.
I think that's been commonplace in multiple committees. I know that the Visitation Committee has changed throughout my tenure on the Board, and there's never been a discussion about how things were done or what changes would be. So if you feel going forward, maybe we should have something set in writing for procedures that people could refer to, then that would definitely be a way to go in the right direction rather than challenging, criticizing someone who is new and saying that it's...
I'm not criticizing someone who's new. I'm just making the statement. Excuse me. I'm making the statement that when somebody comes to a place and they are the new person, before changing things, find out how things have been working now.
And again, I go back to my previous comment. That has been habit throughout my past eight-plus years. That has always been the way things are done. I remember being on the Visitation Committee with you and how things were done at that point in time has changed and has evolved.
I would know because I'm no longer on that committee.
But, you know, it was just done. So it wasn't a formal discussion or, you know, a back and forth about it. It was just change. But if you feel that it would be better to have a set standard practices for how committees function in terms of who's taking the minutes, how were the minutes approved and so on, and put that down into writing, then that would definitely be something that could be accomplished throughout each of the committees.
I see the point, and I also think that it would make sense to have because if not, then we're going to possibly reinvent the wheel every year. So I'm on board with everyone else's.
Who's taking?
Perhaps those have been on the committees for longer can, you know, state what they believe happened in the past.
What works and what doesn't work.
Say again?
Basically, what works and what doesn't.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, someone who's been there can continue.
Things don't need change.
To Dan's point, though, it typically goes through whoever is the liaison of that meeting. So I asked that question when I became the policy chairperson. I did not know how it was done prior because I wasn't that person. So I had a conversation with Elsie because she is typically the cabinet member who sits in on all of those policy meetings, and that's how I was told. At that point, Chris DiLorenzo had already gone, so he wasn't here for me to even ask. But Elsie and I had kind of worked that out, and that's how it was done. To Dan's point, it was my understanding, when I was the first time on the Visitation Committee, I wasn't the chairperson. Dawn was, and Dawn had that conversation between Patrick and I believe Andre always submitted minutes, or some type of minutes to Patrick. So I think that has been the practice previously, and then it was presented typically to the committee members prior to it being adopted and placed into board docs. And my thought tonight was that while we've never challenged it before, there has never been a reason to challenge it before until tonight.
And I just want to add as a procedural point that when minutes are submitted, Ms. Clark, should it say who submitted the minutes as part of...? I'm sorry?
We can.
It was said. It wasn't like an anonymous thing. Dawn put it in. I sent it over to Dawn.
No, I just assumed that it came from the superintendent, and it just was not the usual format of the way that she usually processes the minutes with us. So there was just some question as to why, you know, we don't have roles within the committees. Like, you're not the secretary.
Not even a little.
He did a good job.
No, I'm not...
So just to wrap that up, it sounds like there's agreement, if I'm understanding, to put some protocols together for the committees so that it guides new people in the future and more formalize it. Is that what I've heard? That way, Taryn can document it.
Yeah, we can put something on the agenda.
It can be high-level.
Agenda item one or something to talk about how to make the process more efficient.
Sure. Efficient processes, I'm all for.
Right.
It wasn't questioning the accuracy. It was questioning the accuracy, and I think that's the part where the discussion comes in.
I understand. You were questioning accuracy, but it sounds like other people were questioning process and procedure. So I equate that to a discussion of, you know, efficiency, making it simpler, making it more clear. We can put, as agenda item one, you know, looking at the processes and procedures to make them more efficient.
And Suzanne, I'll say in front of everybody, if you felt disrespected by me after the minutes, I apologize. That was not obviously my intention at all.
I'm not saying by you in particular, but the process.
And I think just for me...
I felt the process was disrespectful.
I just want to put on the record that the concern that I had with some of the minutes and respectfully understanding that it was your first time submitting them, on its face, it seems that several, you know, it was repeated. Several Board members did not want to discuss this issue. That sounds a little contentious. And that's not, in fact, what happened in that room. We were all together as a group discussing things as a cohesive board, a committee board.
That's what we were looking for, but it's actually not what happened.
Well, it's not...
People pushed back against... I mean, we've heard it tonight. There was a little...
I don't mean, I hate cutting anybody off, but I think this is really something that should go back into policy.
That's fine.
Because we're going to move into a debate now. And I'm not, I don't know the warrant. I didn't read them. I don't know what happened. So I think it's really important that you all get together and figure out what that looks like. But Dawn, do you have any last comments before?
No, I'm happy with that suggestion.
So just to close it up then, we have our meeting on Monday. We can have agenda items. Like I think you were saying, number one, to discuss the procedure for how to do that, as well as we'll spend time going through the minutes and discussing.
That's fair. Yep. That's easy for me because we won't have to change the agenda the last time.
Thank you. Next up, action items.
Mike, I would like to make a motion.
We need, I thought we got the minutes. You didn't get them?
Mike, I'd like to make a motion. I think it needs Board approval to go forward. I'm less confused about this type of discussion. I'm confused why the PTA thinks that someone had to resign. I'm curious about having a discussion about how or why that happened. I don't know if other Board members are interested because it seems like the PTA has gotten up and said, we made a policy, the lawyers drafted a policy that said someone had to resign, and not only is that not true, but there's actual written language going to the lawyers saying if there's a thing...
You made a motion.
Motion.
Someone has to second it if it's going to be a discussion item, and is this the appropriate spot for it? I don't know. Again, I'm newer to the role, too. I want to make sure I...
Robert's rule allows you to do it if you get a quorum. Right.
That's fine.
Well, I wasn't at the policy meeting.
Do we have a second?
I will second it. I did not, I did receive the same email, so I would like to hear a little bit more about it as well, so I will provide my second.
So I would suggest that we go around who else wants to. We'll start with Dawn, who wants to have this conversation right now and open it up. Dawn, is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Dawn is, and Suzanne?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's get it on.
Okay, so Dawn, you have the floor.
Okay, so my biggest thing is I would be just as upset as the PTA was. I mean, they made very, very valid points coming up here, saying, hey, you're requiring our President to resign. And I'm just completely floored by that statement because no one, no one's... And I think you asked Elsie and Jamel, no one's mentioned any form of resignation. On top of that, I think the other part of this is we, Don Beeler or anyone else on the policy meeting, isn't making the policy. The lawyers draft a policy, give it to us with the understanding that we'll have a discussion, right? We'll have a discussion. We try to form the policies to accommodate both the district and the community, right? And I think the biggest flaw, one was there wasn't a discussion, but I'm not looking to get into that discussion. I'm looking into where did the resignation thing come from? Because I actually have a note to the lawyer early on saying, by the way, if you're recommending resignation, I want to, you know, my statement was, if the next discussion is, we should be, how to help the PTA transition from the old... There was a whole thing saying resignation. Was it even mentioned ever? So I think that part is confusing to me because I agree with what the PTA said earlier. It's like, I don't know where they got the impression that someone had to resign. And I asked the lawyers if that's what they recommended, which we haven't seen that yet, that they could probably work some wording out. So that's why I wanted to discuss it with the group, is where is that coming from?
Suzanne has a question.
Yeah, I have a question for you. If we were to change the policy so that a Board member cannot serve on the PTA, what would be your remedy then to Dawn's situation, other than resigning?
So the simplest remedy, which is one that we had discussed, was that you don't require the existing person to resign, right?
We discussed? I'm sorry. I don't remember that discussion.
I discussed with the lawyers, meaning before this... So the point is, had we had a discussion in policy about this policy, that information would have come out and people wouldn't have run off half-cocked. Because to me, I agree with what the PTA said.
Can I...
These are public meetings.
Who said to the PTA that they were going to have to resign?
I don't think anybody said anything, but the draft policy that was submitted to the policy committee, the public meeting, only included one section, nine. It's identical to our existing policy 6110, other than the federal grant section.
It's number six as well.
Okay. My mistake.
I don't see where it says anyone.
Number nine. I'm going to read number nine. A Board of Education member, officer or employee may be involved as a volunteer or employee in a charitable organization which has a relationship with the school district. However, no Board of Education member, officer or employee of the school district may serve as an officer in the activities of any organization which has a relationship with the school district, including, but not limited to, the PTA.
So that presents a conflict, and therefore, what's the remedy?
So the remedy is...I know what the remedy is because it's our core function as a Board of Education.
But we didn't discuss that remedy at that policy committee.
We didn't.
We did not. That's right. So that's the whole point.
But not because we'd...
Excuse me. I think the remedy is inferred in the language.
Before we get to that, just to confirm once again, we did not discuss that level of detail because...
But there was ample opportunities.
Once again, we did not discuss that level of detail because it was brought up that we shouldn't be discussing this at all. And you guys didn't want to talk about it.
Well, it was brought up that there was already an opinion provided to the Board of Education by the attorneys.
Therefore, we should not be discussing it at all.
And then it was provided. Well, you couldn't discuss it. It's an opinion.
No, we literally couldn't because as a committee, it did not want to be discussed.
But we did for 45 minutes.
We did. And then Mr. Beeler said that there was a new opinion. I even sent an email to Mr. Cirello asking for that opinion. I'm still waiting for that response.
No, we went on to other business. We didn't come to a conclusion.
Correct. But there was a discussion about it, and Mr. Beeler told all of us in attendance that there was a new opinion. And my question to him then, and my question in the email, was where is the new opinion from the attorneys? And what is the attorney's recommendation?
I believe that did come through.
We did discuss that.
We did have that. But we didn't have the full discussion regarding whether or not this policy should be put forward and concluded.
So can Mr. Beeler share the remedy now? Because he said he spoke to the attorney.
So the way this works is policy discusses...the policy committee discusses a policy. It takes into consideration both the organization and the community, and it makes recommendations to the policy committee. And part of those recommendations, which we were prepared to discuss, is if, and the lawyers have not rendered the opinion yet, they drafted the language. I didn't draft any of the language. So if the lawyers came back and said, "Absolutely, you've got to do this," my comment to them was, "That's not fair. We have to sit down with the PTA. Can we do that if you come back and say they have to, you know, do something drastic?" And he said, "Absolutely, we can work something out."
Why was it brought up to the attorney initially?
Correct. After Harry...
I'd be happy to go into that one.
Can...
If you're sure you want to go.
I'm sure everybody would love an answer.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just jump in for a second? Because I do want to say something about that meeting. There were four policies that were presented. There was a discussion about the two first two policies. I was the one that said halfway through the policy, I said, "Jamelle has an hour, and we have two policies that we need to present to the Board of Education." The first policy I said that needed to be presented was the policy that all of you voted on and said that we needed to change the three minutes to four minutes, right? So we discussed that. We went into detail, and we said, "Let's take care of that policy." The second policy, which you will hear about, is students that are not resident. So I was the one that recommended that we start to focus on these two policies because I felt that they were very important, and we had an hour. So just for clarity, I said, "Let's stop these two policies because these policies are going to require a lot more discussion."
Right.
And we need to focus on these two policies that need to come to the board.
I agree with what...I agree that's what you said.
Right.
And I think the thing I would add to it is there's a reason you said, "Let's focus on these two policies," which was, at that time, I thought was a really good approach, is because we could not get past the fundamental of...Jamelle in the meeting said, "Can't we just read them and see who disagrees with what it says?" And it was like, "No." So I agree with the way you just portrayed it, and I thought the resolution that you came up with was excellent.
That's not accurate, Dawn, because we did read it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have seen that new clause that was added. I don't understand how you're saying that we didn't read it and discuss it. We saw the clause that was in it. And I just want to state for the record that procedurally, what typically would have happened, and again, I know that you're a new chairperson to the policy committee, to the PTA's point earlier, and to Elsie's redirection during that meeting, is because typically it is a collaboration as to which are the primary policies that are the focus of the school district.
So the motion on the table, the motion on the table, how did they get that impression?
Is how did that get the priority?
Right, so...
So that's not going to be answered.
All right, so no, I will answer that question directly. But what I'd like to do is finish this one. And if you want to discuss that one, I'm more than happy to discuss it. However, the question, the motion on the table is, how did the PTA get the impression? Who gave them that impression? How did that impression...
The wording.
How did that impression be given when it wasn't discussed? And Mike sent a letter out saying, "No one ever discussed resignation."
But how...
Isn't it implied?
No, it's not.
How is that implied?
See, I read it, and that's my interpretation.
That's fair. That's fair.
And I think that's their interpretation.
Well, that was the New York State PTA's interpretation as well.
Well, that's another issue, right?
Is it?
It is. It's another issue.
And how did they see it? Obviously, it's a public meeting. It's public documents.
Okay, so we can...that's a separate motion. However, I think, to capitalize what you're saying, our impression was there would be no resignation. And it was surprised to us when the word resignation came up.
Well, resignation from which position? It didn't say I had to pick one, right? So...
Let me attempt to kind of bridge the gap.
I'm just curious, who's "we" and who's "us" because you used both those words.
"We" is "us."
It wasn't me.
Let me try to bridge the gap.
The impression I had was that Dawn would have to resign.
From one of them.
Let me try to bridge the gap, please, regarding the resignation thing. First of all, resignation was not a word or any synonym of it in that meeting. We did not talk about any kind of resignation being needed. Wait, wait, because I don't think that was the intention. If we would have talked more through it, what would have come out is...
That was...
She's in that position now. We're board members now. There could be wording in the document that says, "After your term is up, you've got to make a decision." Not saying you have to leave PTA, not saying you have to leave the board. That's her decision. She's her own person. But it was put as a...
If it's a conflict of interest.
Yes.
If it's a conflict of interest.
Why doesn't the conflict of interest happen that day?
How do you resolve it? You resigned from one.
Because it's not specific to her.
To me, that is implied.
It's not specific to her unless you want to just focus on her.
I think it was...
I think it goes back to the initial question that...
Why was this raised in the first place?
It was raised in the first place. After, as a board, we've had that discussion on this. We've had this discussion several times.
I don't have the background, so that's...
Over the years, several times. Lorraine actually brought it up the first time because she was concerned that it was a conflict of interest.
Can I make a statement? That we review things that we have opinions on all the time.
Agreed, which was why I said there is a new opinion.
So I mean, I don't think the idea of having a discussion about things where we've already had an opinion by a lawyer is something that we really should even oppose.
I'm not opposed to that. I've asked for it. I'm not opposed to that.
So that's what we're trying to do, have a discussion.
But it's...well, I don't know. I wasn't there. But it sounds like that didn't take place at the policy meeting, that there wasn't a discussion.
I specifically asked for it. I've asked for it a second time. So I am not opposed to the opinion.
There wasn't a discussion about the contents of the policy. There was a discussion about whether we should have a discussion about it because it's already been ruled on. That's my understanding of reading the...
That is 100% true.
Of reading the minutes, what you're saying is incorrect. So I don't know. I wasn't there.
I'm sorry. There's...
But there's a distinction between those two things.
Let's try to wrap it up. It sounds like, I think, from a public's perspective, I think the public has a better perception of what the intent of this was. And what I can assure you is that resignation wasn't part of the intent. How...and I think, you know, in our opening board appreciation, one of the comments was, I forget the exact word, but it was, you know, "Our main job is to have these healthy discussions. And our obligation as a board, that's our number one, is to say, how does something impact the organization? How does it impact the community?" Right? So we need to have that discussion when we go into policy. Anyone who refuses, or not refuses, but pushes back on having a discussion, right, this is a perfect example of what happens when a board doesn't have a conversation.
So can you share what that would look like as far as you made mention of continuing my PTA role until the end of the year and then asking me to resign?
I can't because we need to have a discussion on it.
Well, you had a conversation with the attorney that didn't include the policy committee.
Prior to the discussion.
You keep referencing "we" and "us," and I'm a little...
Okay, so let me...okay, let me explain that conversation. To me, the way the board presented it tonight was the way I felt, right? So I took that thing and said, "By the way, if you come back with a hard, you know, hard position on this..."
I'm sorry, the board took a position tonight? You just said the way the board felt tonight.
I meant the PTA. Meaning, I'm saying the PTA. I thought I said PTA. I might have said board.
My PTA board.
Okay, I meant PTA. So I looked at it like, first of all, the way it was characterized is Don Beeler came up with this. I didn't write that. And so that leads us into the second question. Why did any of this come up, right? That question's a valid question.
It came up because you approached the attorneys to have something discussed and drafted prior to...again, I'll repeat it. That typically the procedure, and I'm not opposed to changing procedure. A lot of changes. There's new people and roles. I get it. Change is a good thing. But what typically happens during policy, and I've been a member for seven years, Suzanne has been there longer, prior to my being a chairperson, prior to Chris DiLorenzo being a chairperson, she was there with others. Typically, what happens, which is what we discussed in that meeting, is that the current chairperson and the superintendent would come together with an agreement as to what the current policies are that need the most attention. Then it is brought to the policy committee. The committee sits down. They discuss it all. They see what's pertinent, what's coming down from the state, what needs to be addressed first, and what is the priority for our students. That is typically the procedure. What happened in this meeting was you, the chairperson, over the summer contacted the attorneys without having any conversation with anyone else about an opinion that we already had written, could have changed, credit due, could change. You then contacted them, brought it into the meeting, and in a stack of four policies that you had, this was the first one on it.
So I'm going to use...
So again, I asked the question, "Why were you getting brought back?"
I'm going to answer you. So I'm going to use your question as a perfect example of why these things get convoluted, okay? You made a whole bunch of statements just now. I'll use the word inaccurate. So let's go back to why this even started. Four board members were approached that the behavior of two board members seemed like there was a confusion as to what their role was, okay? That is how this all started. So in the word of, that is called governance, right? So in governance, you go back and you review all of your governance policies. And you say, "And we reviewed 20 governance items. We modified, we added, I'm going to say eight. We modified one, right? As a result, the lawyers went through, and I said, 'Hey, we need to have a governance discussion to tighten up so that it's not a misunderstanding of what the board's role is.'" And they came back with suggestions. My comment in the meeting is, none of us thought of the suggestion of making sure that we include, if a board member somehow benefits from a federal grant, that that would be a conflict of interest. That was item number six. The PTA thing was item number nine. So none of us had any clue of that. So the process, which I've used before in governance, is you ask the lawyers to say, "Hey, you guys deal with like 100 districts. Is there any language we should be considering to make sure our governance policies aren't out of date?" They came back and they said, "Yes, we'll provide you with some governance policies." And that, they came back and said, "You need to create...you really don't have a solid governance policy. Maybe that's why there's confusion as to the way board members behave." So just like students, just like teachers, just like administrators, we have rules that we have to live by, right? And there was confusion. I'm not, you know, I don't want to paint it as something else. And apparently, there's good reason for that confusion. So we went through 20 governance items. One of them...
Who's "we"?
Lawyers. The lawyers said, "I asked the question, what..."
But this is before the policy committee even convened for the first time.
So let me finish. So my experience is this. None of us are, well, Mr. Hassler's, but none of us are lawyers. So you asked the lawyers, "What standard practice? What are you seeing in other districts?" That still doesn't mean you have to adopt those standard practices. But when you go into a policy meeting, what you want to do is say, "Give me all the information so that I can make a decision. Yeah, I agree with that. I disagree with that." So you present this all to the policy, and you say, "Let's have a discussion. I agree, I disagree." Go back to the lawyers and say, "Is there a problem with us saying no to this?" Okay? That's what you do. So out of that came, I think it's nine. I have to look at it.
Dawn, I just want to...
It's not even the right policy because that policy that you're referring to is the other draft policy that you attempted to get on the agenda, which was policy 2100.
You asked me a question how it came about. This came about because there was...
And 2100 is where you specifically would, again, attempts to get on here, where as board members, we would need written permission from the entire board to enter a building.
Let's agree on this. You and I are attorneys.
So that was a reference to what your answer just was.
So I...no, you're wrong. I asked the attorneys, "What should we do about governance?" They recommended, they split it into two policies. They recommended the conflicts stay in one policy. They recommended the governance stay in thing. So again, my job is to present more information so that a board, a policy, can have an open discussion and say, "Do we agree or disagree with where this is going?" And I guarantee you, there's no, it's less than one says something. No one thought of the federal grant, right? I didn't think of that. So they came back and said, "Hey, you should have this in your policy that if you're personally involved in a federal grant that benefits the school, you need to recuse yourself." So it's like, okay, that's a good governance.
Mr. Beeler, I just want to pull this together.
I agree.
We're running over, and the conversation has been robust, and I appreciate that. I would like to kick it back to the policy committee to sit and go through some of these items and have a broader discussion. If it's still an issue and we want to have a more discussion at the next public meeting, absolutely. Obviously, it's not put up for any vote today, so it really should be discussed. And if the policy committee...you said you have a meeting coming up?
Monday.
Can I just have a clarification? So at this point, the statement is that the attorneys drafted this policy based on you reaching out to them regarding a concern, and it led into a governance conversation.
I reached out to them about a governance issue. They drafted this policy because this policy exists in four other districts that they...
It sounds contrary to what the New York State PTA attorneys...
I can't, again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not saying it is or isn't. That's why we have discussion, right? And to me, the first thing I said to Elsie when I walked in is, "This is great. The letter from the New York PTA, this is awesome." Because again, none of us drafted it, so we'll hand that letter to the attorneys and say, "Hey, they have a different opinion than you. Tell us what you think." To me, that's a great resolution, right? And that's why, to me, I'm shocked that it's kind of gone down this hole.
One last comment. You said the attorney, you've said several times tonight, the attorney's opinion. I would really like to see that. And it's been asked for.
And we've asked for it, too.
And I would really like to see, well...
Because the prior opinion...
It's been inferred that there is an opinion, so I'm...
There's a new opinion.
Right, a new opinion. So I would like to see that new opinion.
Because the prior opinion says it expressly...
Not allowed.
Does the prior opinion also talk about appearance of impropriety?
No.
Yes, it does. The one that Stacy sent us says, right, in your letter, that the lawyer said, "You can recuse yourself from this officer PTA, but you will still have an appearance of impropriety," okay?
It didn't say you have to be careful of it. So that's why you would recuse yourself from certain conversations, similar to a board member that has a relationship.
To conversations about a board that you're on. Did you recuse yourself at that policy meeting?
No.
Regarding what?
You're an executive board member on the PTA.
Right.
You're talking about a policy which you actually, I guess, never got around to talking about, but that discussion is about that very topic.
Was I asked to recuse myself?
I don't think you have to be asked. I think that's the rule, isn't it?
It's...
In that letter that Stacy passed around that showed the prior legal interpretation by the lawyers, doesn't it say?
It says that it is not a conflict of interest.
And what does it say right after that? I have it here if you want me to read from it.
Please. You can have it quicker than I can, I'm sure.
Sure. And when it talks about appearance of impropriety, it says, "Board member interests in an association that seeks to do business with a school district or in a relationship with a school district that are not prohibited by statute but nevertheless create the appearance of impropriety."
But I'm not seeking to do business as a PTA member.
It said something else, too. It didn't say...
"May lead to the requirement of disclosure of the apparent conflict of interest and recusal from any discussion, votes or board actions on the matter."
But go back to the first sentence. If I'm looking to do business, that's what you just read.
Or are in a relationship with a school district that are not prohibited by statute but nevertheless create the appearance of impropriety.
So let me clarify something from a governance standpoint. Whenever the lawyers say in a letter, "This creates the appearance of a problem," it's going to be reviewed every year. Because we wouldn't be doing our job if the lawyers say, "Hey, by the way, you better be careful with this." We're like, "Okay, let's never discuss it again."
I think we should be careful here, right? Because we have board members that have, you know, interest in other areas that we have policy that speaks to also, right? Like, if we're going to talk about contract negotiations, there should be recusals there as well, and we don't. So to put it on me that I should have recused myself from something that I didn't even know was happening because the agenda was not provided prior to the meeting, I had to ask for the policies that were gonna be discussed, and I received them the day before. So to put it on me that it was my responsibility to recuse myself for conversation that I didn't even know was happening-
But you knew it when you were in it.
Well, I-
When you're in the conversation, you don't know what it's about.
Well, Mr. Evans said we didn't even get a chance to discuss it.
Well, you know what the policy was, that's not-
But it wasn't specific to me.
Then, so you didn't read it, because you said you got it the night before. So you didn't read the policies?
No, I read the policies.
We're going, it sounds like, it sounds like- We're going around in circles, please.
Absolutely. Why, I'll make a motion to end this discussion, and then we can continue it.
Second, sorry.
Okay, we can continue it. But I'm glad we had a chance to clarify something because I don't want the public concerned about something that's not being discussed or gonna happen.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a broader statement. Everyone up here is pro-PTA.
Yeah.
I, I, we've all got kids, we've all are, are part of it, or were part of it, or will be part of it. So we're all for the PTA. So I don't want you to come away with any other impression except that. We just are discussing things, and potential policy things, that, that's what you do as a board.
We're nine people, we don't always agree. Yeah, we, I, I think, I mean, sorry to keep going, but I think that's something that our lawyers should see and let them kind of figure it out. Like, I don't want to keep saying it, but it's true, we're not lawyers, so.
Unfortunately, law is never black and white. It's a series of gray, right? I mean, that, that letter from John Gross is, is six pages long. So it doesn't just say, hey, this is it, that's the end of the statement. It's six pages. So it talks about, you know, what's leading this way, what's leading that way. Ultimately, it comes to a conclusion, but it also has some carvebacks that, you know, they have to protect themselves, they're lawyers. So nothing is black and white.
Thank you for allowing us to discuss this.
Thank you.
And regardless of what we discussed at this point, I'm sure Ms. Rodriguez will be addressing your specific questions at our next meeting.
Mrs. Rodriguez is addressing them?
I'm addressing the question.
Don't you, didn't, isn't Ms. Rodriguez the one who usually responds to questions and comments from?
It was directed to the board president.
Okay. And I, then, then Mrs. Suriello, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, I was reminded that, um, we didn't finish the approval of the minutes from September 28th. So can I have a motion for those, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Action items, approval for the review, a PPR hardship waiver resolution. I believe Eric, you provide an update on that, please?
So for the past five years, we've applied for an independent evaluator hardship waiver from the State Education Department because 3012D, which is the regulation that requires us to evaluate teachers and staff, also requires us to potentially contract with outside vendors to conduct third-party evaluations of our staff, which would result in a, a financial burden on the school district as well as a time burden on the school district. The, the State Education Department recognizes the, the burden that this would potentially put on school districts, so they offer school districts to apply for a waiver of that regulation. Um, we've applied for the last five years, we've received the waiver, and we will once again be, we have actually submitted the application to the State Department, and we're awaiting final approval of that. But it also needs to be accompanied by an action from the board.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, 9.2, approval of the Board of Education manual for 2022. May I have a motion?
I have two things.
Sure.
There's two pieces in it that are, that are not accurate. The first is the bottom of page seven needed to be corrected. It is no longer, board committees can be established anytime. However, the board currently approves three committees annually at the organization meeting. It reads policy audit and facilities, it should read visitation. And the second piece is the link that is at the top of page 10 for the board evaluation. That link is no longer used and isn't accurate. I had it on the agenda for the board retreat this year.
Okay, so, um-
Are we able to approve it pending those, approve it here and assuming changes?
I would be comfortable with that if someone wants to make a motion to approve pending those changes that were outlined. So we have, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of voting delegate for the 2022 New York State School Board Annual Convention. Can I have a motion to appoint Jeffrey Reynolds for that position or role, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution to approve participation of Monroe Woodbury students on Menasync clay skeet team. Is there any discussion, questions?
Just a question regarding that.
Yeah.
The equipment used is storage, location, et cetera.
Menasync, right?
Nothing is done onsite here, it's actually done through Menasync. There are not a lot of schools that have the program, so students are invited from other districts. Uh, but it's typically done offsite, not on, not at Menasync either. It's a-
So it's not like they're having a practice out on the football field?
Newburgh's extremely good at this.
Very regulated, very safe.
Okay, so, so, uh, any, any, uh, equipment related to the activity is housed in the possession of the Menasync School District there. They secure it, they make sure-
Yes, there's nothing on our-
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy manual, first reading. Can I have a motion to approve the first reading of the policy manual?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
10.2, waiving of the second reading of the update to the policy manual. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a question.
Sure.
So it's, if I understand it correctly, the non-resident, if you're a junior and you move out of district when you're a junior, that you can come as a senior tuition free?
You can apply to come as a senior, tuition's free.
And they would have to be in ninth and 10th grade as well?
So that, right, they have to be in ninth or 10th, and obviously serve some of the 11. And then they move, and then to 12th grade, and that is decided by you and only you?
No, what do you mean decided by me?
So if I read it correctly, it's, it's up to the superintendent's decision.
So, so what typically happens is a parent will write a letter and they say, my child, I'm just gonna give you an example. Uh, my child has attended Monroe Woodbury all the way up through 11th grade. Our family has moved, um, we're gonna petition for our child to be able to attend 12th grade. Finish, if it's midway through 11th grade, finish 11th grade and attend 12th grade. Um, there's a process that we go through, which is generally, I will go through the student's academic records. I will also look at their discipline records and make a decision in concert with the high school principal. So I talked to the high school principal, and I said, look, this is a student. If a student is in good standing, uh, we respond back, my office will respond back and say, yes, you can, um, come to school. You know, we will not provide transportation, but you can come to school.
Right, so my, my question would be, as a school district and taxpayers, is that beneficial to them? Because now they're paying for a student, so I, I don't know what the term is for junior year, right? So if they're junior and they're, say, they're, you know, it's October, right? And they're moving, then we let them finish their junior and senior year. Now, basically, the school district is, and the taxpayers are paying for a student for two years of schooling without paying any taxes into the district.
That is true. But that has been our practice, and so we discussed it in policy. Um, the reason you see it's a first reading was because we felt like we wanted to discuss this out in the community and, and have feedback from the board members. So it's up for discussion. We've, it's been a past practice of ours. Um, we've never charged tuition for that particular student. Now, once you move out of the district, obviously, you can no longer attend if you're in the elementary or middle school. Um, but that has been our practice, and it's a discussion. I mean, just like we had a discussion before, it really is a discussion for the board to, um, discuss that, if they think that that's, that's, that's okay.
Is, is there any sort of process to get the money from the district that they've moved to?
No, because we're a public school and they choose to come here. Um, so there is no remedy for us to go to the public school in which they're living in to get money from them.
We even have to charge them tuition.
Right.
Which we've discussed in policy previously.
Correct.
Is there a current figure on the number of students who are currently at this moment receiving?
Um, it's, it's a very low number, because I, it goes through my office, and I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna say maybe there's two to three students that we have that. It is not common.
Between junior year and senior year?
It's about two to three.
Two to three students?
Two to three students.
It's my understanding that this policy is typical in other districts as well?
Yes, and some school districts have, um, policies that allow to, teachers who don't live in the district who, to have their children attend our school, so that's also been a discussion. Um, see, Jamel's shaking his head, no. Um, but I think that, that, you know, um, it is, it is practiced in other school districts. I think that the other piece that we, we did change was there was, um, a, a, a policy of ours that we allowed foreign exchange students. We discussed it, and we decided that at this point, we are not going to allow foreign, foreign exchange student. It hasn't happened, but I think it was important for the policy to reflect what the committee discussed.
We have a public comment on that in the email too, so will that get responded to also? Because we did receive that email, asking us to reconsider that.
Oh, okay.
From a parent. And I think-
Which part of it?
Foreign exchange.
Um, I don't know, I believe it was yesterday. It was October 11th.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Especially with the low numbers we're talking about.
That was in regards to the foreign exchange, not the tuition fees.
I think it becomes the organization versus the community, kind of that weighing in to say, what's fair if someone's a senior?
What kind of, what kind of real numbers is that, like dollars?
Um, well, you figure what tuition for each student is approximately 20?
No, I would, well, there's a couple of ways to look at it. The, the typical way we look at it is non-resident tuition rate's about 14,500. So that's the rate districts charge each other based on SED regulation. So it's, you know, it's not a huge amount of money.
Uh, the email was yesterday around a quarter after 11:00 or so.
11:00 at night?
I didn't look.
Because I go to bed at 9:00 o'clock.
No, it's- Pick one, you're 50/50. I think it's, I think it's 11:00 in the morning.
Okay.
Um, how many students are the opposite? Meaning have moved to Monroe Woodbury but are continuing their education, their junior, senior year, outside of our district?
I would say zero.
Zero.
Mm-hmm.
It's usually for the school.
I would assume, but I just figured I would, I would ask nonetheless, so-
It's a good question.
Has it, has there ever been an instance where we are the giveaway, so to speak, of a, a student to continue in another district while receiving the tax revenue from an existing resident?
No.
It's always-
Look, I think the video was, was pretty profound, right? You had our own kids saying they have a stellar education here.
Oh, no, I, I-
And, and so, no, it doesn't happen. I mean, it could happen.
Well, I mean, I figured, I figured it was worth, worth asking, because if you say other districts have the same policy, you know, th- these students would be students that are, are within driving distance of a reasonable time, especially with the high school, starting at what, a little bit after 7:00 AM? You know, how early can you leave your house? 4:00 AM to get here? That's, you know, so I want to know if there was any other students that would fall into that category.
There, there isn't that I know of, but I've never really researched that. I mean, we, I'm gonna say it's very unlikely.
And, and I don't, I don't know that we would know because technically, if they move into the school district and they stay registered at their prior school district, I don't think that they would actually have to come into us to tell us that, I'm registering Monroe Woodbury, but I'm not gonna physically be attending here. They remain enrolled in their prior school.
That's a good point.
So I, I don't know, I don't officially that we would know.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this the beginning of the, the, uh, debate period for this policy?
Yes.
So, co, uh, public, if they wanna speak, and then we'll be able to speak on this again?
Yes.
Second reading.
Yes, and that's why we did that, right? The, the, the committee spoke about that this particular policy. I mean, the other policy, I think we approved or will approve, the board discussed it and you approved it. And it was moving from three minutes to four minutes. This policy is new, and we felt as though we wanted to have a discussion, like we're having now, and then let the, the public comment on. If you wanna come up and, and, you know, give your opinion on it, I think it's important. But you see, we have sort of both sides, right? Some people may say, we shouldn't be giving anyone anything for free. And other people might say, well, if you've had an experience and you've been a good student and good standing, then why not let that student finish? Um, it's, it's a, it's a healthy debate.
As a board member, we have to look at the financial side of it, right? So with 14,500, I think-
Yeah, that's-
For a person, right, every dollar matters. So that's $30,000 or at least, if not $45,000 this year. For, and, and listen, I, I work in the military world, right? We move all the time. So like, for, for me, I don't understand why that policy would even exist.
So let me, I think, how I saw it when we first looked at it was, if that person's in good standing, chances are they're not moving because they want to. You know, they're, they're moving because-
Teenagers, for sure.
But it's not a decision, it's a parent's decision.
COVID messed everything up, rent prices are going crazy.
And I'm not saying, I agree the student should be able to go. I completely agree that the student should be able to come, if he's here or she is here. They're, you know, freshman, sophomore, and junior year, and they wanna stay their senior year. I absolutely would support that. But I think that their parents should pay. You know, and it shouldn't be free chicken.
It should be tuition.
It should be, hey, your, your parent, you wanna move for whatever reason, whether you're willing or not.
That's a reasonable question.
That's in my mind. Have to pay for tuition.
Also, and I don't see it cited at the bottom of this draft, and off the top of my head, I can't remember which one it is, but we do have language also on those people that you move out of the district and now you claim you still live here. And we technically, as a school district, go after those people. Because we are not, you're not paying your school taxes to Monroe Woodbury. So I can understand then why it's kind of, we're allowing it in certain regards if they're honest with us. If you're honest and you're coming forward and asking permission of the superintendent, then you could be granted the opportunity, but free of charge.
Right.
And then we also have those that just circumvent that entire process and say that they live here with so-and-so when they actually don't.
So I should speak about that?
Yeah.
Because we do have people that live in this, that don't live in this district, who live in other districts and send their children to our schools.
Correct.
So if anybody's watching, they should know that we have hired a private investigator, and we will investigate you, and we will go after you, and we will charge you for tuition.
Well done.
Because that's unfair to the taxpayers of this community. So I, trust me, I am pretty vigilant when it comes to that. We are not going to have people who don't live here, um, who say they do, and then have their children attend our schools and reap the benefits of this community, so.
I would also say that if we agree as a board that it's okay, we're gonna do tuition free, then we should also look at the other schools, right? To, to pick just a high school as the only place you get to stay, like, I don't know if I agree with that, right? It should be consistent.
Well, then it's even more cost prohibitive.
Because like, if, you know, if my kid's in Pine Tree and I wanna stay in Pine Tree, and, you know, why not let them finish out their fifth grade year?
We often, so, so we-
Same thing for middle school, you know, any of our grades.
We often, we often do that. So say, for example, you're in the, in, in the middle of the school year. No. No, we don't do that. So if you're a fifth grader and your parents move in, in, in February or March, a parent can email us and say, you know, we just moved, my child has been in Pine Tree, will use Pine Tree, you know, since second grade. Would you be willing to grant us the child finish out the year? Because socially, emotionally, let's talk about that, it's, it's hard for kids to move.
I would completely agree with that.
So we do that, with the exception of, we don't provide you transportation.
Right.
So you have to, so we do do that for children who've moved, you know, in the middle of the year. Because we're cognizant that it's hard for, for kids to deal with change in the middle of the year.
Uh, my point is it looks, to me, it looks inconsistent because we're saying if you're a junior, say, and you've gone three years to Monroe Woodbury High School. That if you move your junior year, your senior year, you can finish because of all the great points that you made, right? The education, both, you know, pluses, pluses for both sides.
Right.
Right? So why would we not say that for someone who's in middle school? Right? Because it's the same, I, I get it's a senior year. Trust me, I, I understand. I got two seniors, right?
Now you're talking about eight years that you have to pay for.
Right, that's why I disagree. Because I see it as a very slippery slope where someone could make the thing of, well, okay, well, can we let kid just finish out one more year of Sapphire?
Right, I get that. Because he's saying if you move in the, if you move in fourth grade, you might allow them to stay. But then, but then as if you, for that point, he's saying that if you allow that student to stay while they moved in fourth grade. Why wouldn't you allow them to stay to finish out Pine Tree or Central Valley in fifth grade, similar to the senior?
Sapphire, same thing. If you move your kindergarten year.
I think one of the reasons why is we allow seniors to drive and I think that the transportation is frequently an issue. Where for a parent to get a fifth grader back and forth for them to complete Pine Tree versus a senior who can typically get themselves back and forth. I think that, that's one of the factors that, that contributes.
Right, but, but again.
That should be a factor, right?
It's still coming down to our responsibility in, with terms of finance and the cost to the taxpayers.
Right.
And, and not to, you know, dispute, there are families that due to rent constraints do have to leave the district. But there are also our families that took advantage of an exploding housing market to cash out and move elsewhere within the county. And still reap the benefits of the school district.
Correct.
So, you know, it, it's, it's hard to separate the emotional from the finance. But I think, I, I do think we have a responsibility to the taxpayers that are paying the bill for the students. Um, to make sure that, you know, we watch every dime and every penny and make sure that all of that money is put towards the students that are residents within the, in the district.
And I think that policy reads intent also. So to that point, if you had an issue, you have a fire, you have whatever. If your intent is to still reside in this community, there is a little bit of a, of a leeway in there.
And we've had that. We've had families whose houses have burned and they've had to move and, you know.
My opinion, supporting that.
Yeah. But it's with the intent that you are going to either rebuild or you're selling your home and buying a new home. Again, there's intent there. I don't know if there's a time limit. I don't, I don't remember what the policy reads.
I don't think we have a time, a time limit, but again, I think this is a good conversation. We have a meeting on Monday. We should take this all back and um, really talk about it. And again, it's been our practice, well, actually, it's been our policy. Probably, I don't know, 20 years. And so we sort of tweaked it. We didn't make a major change to it, but, but the policy committee did talk at length about what we should and should not do. And we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it again on Monday.
I can only imagine how little the cost was 20 years ago versus.
Is there board agreement on not approving the second reading so that it can be kicked back to policy?
It's not up for a second reading.
This is only the first reading.
But it says second.
No, the second reading is only for the four minutes being added.
It's only for the manual. Okay.
Both says policy manual.
It does.
The waiving of the second reading is only for 3220, which is public participation at a board meeting.
Yep.
Okay. That's fine.
So we go to the other one.
Well, that I can make a.
Yeah.
Next, we're up to.
So we need to get.
Personnel.
The changing of the three minutes to four minutes. That's the policy. Which we already did.
I'm confused.
You have to make a motion to waive the second reading of policy 3220.
Thank you.
Motion.
Second.
Aye, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. We can get this.
My brain is still in that conversation. Um, next up is personnel.
I respectfully request, uh, board approval for the items listed under personnel.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, business and financial.
Uh, I also respectfully request the approval of the business and financial items 12.1 through 12.6.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committees on special education and preschool.
Who motioned?
Did we have a motion or did you just say motion and we said second to that?
I'll, I'll say motion.
I'm getting a little hot. I'm really having heat.
Because someone shut the fans off. I wonder who that was.
That was me.
Yeah, I know.
It was messing with my hair.
Me too.
So if I pass out, hopefully someone knows CPR.
Is your hair okay?
Uh, mine's good.
Um, do we need clarification?
We have a motion by Anthony.
Second.
A second by.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's a fly here. I'm just going to kill it.
Committees on special education and preschool education. They have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Regions results preparation, Dr. Hassler.
You want to take five minutes and, and?
Yeah. Five minutes would be great.
For three.
So I need to.
I'm sorry.
Welcome back. No board business was discussed during the break. We're going to turn it over to Dr. Hassler to go over the secondary regions update, please.
So, thank you to the Board of Ed for the opportunity to present. Thank you also to the many, many people. I think that this presentation's in Google Slides and there's upwards of about 20 collaborators on this because there have been many, many eyes that have assisted with the presentation and given me a lot of feedback on the data results and the things that I'm going to speak about. Thank you to the middle school administration, high school administration, all the department chairs of the various departments that I'm going to be speaking about, all of the staff. Kristen Randhare, thank you so much. A lot of people have informed and helped create this presentation. So normally, when I give this presentation, I just jump right into the data. However, I think it's important just to give a little bit of context to what we're going to be speaking about this evening. The results that I'm going to be presenting are the June 2022 Regents' Exams, which was the first full administration of Regents' Exams since the January of 2020 Regents' Administration. But even January Regents' Exams are not fully administered Regents' Exams to all students. It really dates back to June of 2019 was the last large-scale administration of Regents' Exams in New York State. Between then, the June 2020, August 2020, January 2021, August 2021, January of 2022 Regents' Exams were all canceled. And what that means is any student who sat for a Regents' Course during those timeframes and successfully passed that course, they completed it, were given an exemption for the Regents' Exam. They basically were able to get an E on their transcript. They were also, the graduation requirement for that Regents' Exam was also waived. That's part of what was allowed with the exemption. There were some Regents' Exams that were administered in June of 2021. Those were Algebra, Earth Science, only the written portion, not the lab portion of Earth Science, English Language Arts, and Living Environment, which is Biology. In June of 2021, Geometry, Algebra II, Chemistry, Physics, Global U.S. History were all canceled. The reason why those four exams were administered is because the state Ed Department is required by the U.S. Department of Education at that time to administer certain Regents' Exams. So, in June of 2021, exemptions were still given to students whether the exams were administered or not administered. However, students did have the ability to be able to come in and take the exams if they wanted to. So just for a frame of reference, we had 60 students take the Algebra exam in June of 2021, seven take the ELA, 19 take Earth Science, and 68 take the Living Environment. So when I present tonight, I'm going to be speaking to you about the June of 2022 Regents' Results, and then I'm going to compare them to past year's results. June of 2021 is not in there because we had so few students take the exams. So for comparison purposes, you'll see, everybody should have copies of the presentations, it goes from June of 2022 and then back to June of 2019 and back from them because really June of 2019 was the last full-scale administration. Does that make sense so far? So, January of 2022, a quick note about that. This past January, we intended on not only administering the Regents' Exams initially in January 2022, we were also going to administer midterm exams during that timeframe for students that were sitting in Regents' Courses because we were concerned that students had not taken high-stakes exams, in many cases, high school students because of the pandemic and all of the other Regents' Exams that were canceled, in quite a few years. Some, if you track back to when those students were in the middle school and at the elementary level, we had a high number of students that were refusing to take three through eight exams, some students not at all. So our intention in January of 2022 was to not only administer the Regents' Exams but to administer Regents-like midterm exams to give students the practice of taking a prolonged assessment because up until that point, the tests that they had taken were really the 42-minute exams that they would take in-class assessments. Even if they took a practice Regents' Exam, it would have to be administered over multiple days rather than in one seating, in one sitting, which is typically about a three-hour exam. That's the length of a Regents' Exam. However, when the June of 2022 Regents' Exams were canceled, we also had to cancel our midterm exams the way that we intended on administering them because we couldn't count those as days of attendance since no Regents' Exams were being administered. So, for our students, the June of 2022 exams was their first exposure in nearly every single case to some high-stakes testing environment regarding the Regents' Exam. So, some additional pieces of information regarding the June of 2022 exam, this past June. In May, the state Ed Department announced that they were going to institute a special appeal for students, meaning in order for students to graduate with a Regents' Diploma or an advanced Regents' Diploma, they would have to pass certain Regents' Exams with a 65. However, because of COVID, they released a regulation saying that they would allow students to receive a special appeal where they could fulfill that requirement for the Regents' Exam by receiving, by scoring a 50 to a 64 score on a Regents' Exam so long as they successfully passed the course. That information came out in May. The first week of June, they announced that they were canceling the U.S. History Regents' Exam. And then we decided at that time, after the cancellation of the U.S. History Regents' Exam and the announcement of the special appeal, typically in years past, pre-COVID, we would have the Regents' Exams included in students' final averages in the calculation of their F4. So there will be a certain weighting of not only the quarter grades, but the Regents' Exam as well. And we decided that we were going to forego that due to some of the regulations that were coming out from state Ed, the cancellation of one of the Regents' Exams, as well as the environment that we were in at that time where students were still having COVID, we were worried about the number of kids that was going to be able to sit and take the exam, and we were worried about attaching the high stakes of the Regents' Exam and having it calculated into their final average. In addition, when the state Ed Department released their announcement about the special appeal, they released an FAQ and we sent communication out to parents. And the first thing, the first question on the FAQ asked about how does the special appeal impact school districts that use the Regents' Exam in final averages for students? And the response from state Ed was, at the time, they discourage school districts from using Regents' Exams in students' final averages. So we made the decision for this past June that we were going to not have Regents' Exams calculated into students' final averages. The scores would still be on a student's transcript, but they would just not be averaged into their F4. Finally, at the end of June, they also released something called a special determination where if a student was a senior and was otherwise ready to graduate, if they took a Regents' Exam, they took a course that culminated in a Regents' Exam, got less than a 50, or potentially missed because they were out sick for whatever reason, that a special determination could be granted for those students, not to require them to not be able to graduate because of those circumstances. So, because of these various factors, we made the decision about the final exams and this also, when I spoke with the various department chairs, some of these factors played into some of the results that we were looking at in terms of the performance of our students. Any questions so far? Okay. So, on the first slide, on the first results slide, I have the scores of our Algebra Exam in both the high school and the middle school. Proficiency on state assessments is based on either a level 1 through 5 in Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II, and ELA, meaning students receive a score between a level 1 through a level 5. A level 3, 4, or 5 is considered passing. For the various sciences and the social studies exams, it's a level 1 through 4. So when you see the score for proficiency, that is the students who scored above a 65 or a levels 3, 4, and 5 on that exam. Now, I went back and forth when I was doing this presentation and I had many conversations with people about how to present this. And what I decided was, I was going to present the numbers that I believe, that we believe are going to be on our school report card, which does not include the special appeals that students receive. This is the students that scored proficient above a level 3, 4, or 5, or above a 65. However, on the Algebra exam specifically, we had 46 students who, out of the 457 students that sat for the exam, we had 46 students that received the special appeal who scored between a 50 and a 64, which is 10%. So there was an additional 10% of the students who will not have to come back and sit for that exam because they received the special appeal for that. Does that make sense the way that I'm explaining it? The reason why I decided not to include that information in the presentation is because I don't want to falsely represent what our results were. If in the future, somebody sits down and looks at our school report card, the 75% is the number that they're going to see for the June 2022 results, yes.
The 75, would you attribute that drop to COVID?
I think that there are a lot of different factors. This is one of the major conversations that we started to have. Now, you're going to see the results a little bit different in some of the other department areas. Math specifically is interesting. And when I spoke to Jay Nigelski, the Middle School Department Chair, and Stacy Rubin, the High School Math Department Chair, one of the things that they found specifically in mathematics is because mathematics is sequentially skill-based, that if students had any sort of lag or impact on their education in math skills, it's hard to build upon that. And one of the things that I'm going to talk about in a later slide is when they did the item analysis of the exams and speaking to the teachers, the teachers realized that for the first time this past year, they know the topics that are often tested on Regents' Exams and things that don't typically appear on Regents' Exams, and they found themselves eliminating things that they didn't anticipate being on the exam and spending more time on things that they felt are often heavily tested on the exams because of the need of the kids and the performance on the exam. Where normally, they have the standard curriculum and they just go through the entire curriculum. And they found themselves, because of that, making those decisions. I think what we're going to have to do is track this moving forward to really determine more specifically what we can attribute it to. The special appeal, for example, we don't know if students going in said to themselves, "I don't need a 65 anymore. I only need to get a 50 on this exam." And we don't know the impact of any of these items. So, the special appeal is in place June of 2022, August of 2022, January of 2023, and June of 2023. So, I think moving forward, we're going to have to track this to see exactly...
And the students are aware that that's...
But that was an option.
Correct.
And Eric, so this cohort then, for the June 2022 Algebra is freshmen, correct?
Mostly, yes. And that's one thing that's interesting is that typically, because exemptions were given for students in the past, sometimes we have kids who are repeat takers of the exam because they might have not been successful on the exam previously. This is all kids taking it for the first time.
Right, for the first time.
Correct.
And to Suzanne's point, it's kids taking it for the first time whose parents and the students knew the potential that if they did not qualify, it would not count.
Correct.
So there was a lot less pressure for the students sitting in this exam...
Right.
...to, let's say, prepare accordingly.
Correct. And so, we had to grapple with a lot of these decisions where, you know, again, the back and forth about, do we include the scores and/or do we not include the scores? Still saying to the students, in the end, the exemptions that you previously received, the scores that you get, or the special appeal, even if you get the special appeal, if SA appears on your transcript, it still means that you got between a 50 and a 64 on that exam. It may not have the actual score. Kids could choose, if they wanted to, to have the score appear rather than the SA on the transcript, but it still means, rather than the exemption in the past which was given to all students, that you received the score within that range.
And do we have the numbers on that? On how many, you said it was about 20?
Yeah, so on the Algebra high school exam, out of the 457 kids that took the exam, 46 of those students got the special appeal, which was overall 10%. So really, what that means is 15%, 75 plus 10, 85, 15% of the students who sat for that exam because in order to get a Regents' Diploma, you have to pass at least one math exam.
Right.
They're going to have to come back and they're going to have to retake the exam.
Retake the test.
Right.
Can I just quickly say?
Yep.
Huge thank you to the math departments of the high school and middle school for being able to navigate and change things on the fly like you were just explaining?
Yeah, and I mean, and I'm going to, like, when I get into, like, everybody was, well, you'll see.
Okay.
Yeah. One quick note, Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned last time, there was a quick conversation about the open enrollment piece, and I said there's going to be a little bit of that woven into this presentation. When you look at the number of students who took the exam on the Algebra exam on the middle school side, June of 2022, we had the highest number of students sit for the exam this past year because of open enrollment. So previously, it was a single cohort when it was upwards of 100, you know, 96, mid-90s. We had four sections. Then June of 2019, we had five sections. This past year, we had six sections worth of Algebra II. So we had 144 students for the first time sit for the Algebra Regents' Exam as eighth graders, and 100% of the students were able to successfully pass that exam.
And that's without appeals?
Correct. Yes, 100%. Every single student got at least a 65 in the exam.
That's awesome.
Correct, 100%.
That's awesome.
Is it possible, Eric, that any of those students would have perhaps passed the exam with a 65 but did not succeed in the class, or no?
Say that again?
Is it possible that the student would have perhaps passed the exam with a minimum of a 65 but not yet been successful with passing the entire class?
It could have happened, but I don't think that it did.
Okay.
Is that a possibility? Yes. But I do not believe that that took place at the middle school.
Eric, and a lot of the things you're talking about, the district has taken great lengths to put this as part of their goals to address the fact that the state kept pulling the rug out on testing.
Right.
So that a lot of the goals that Elsie laid out before are to be self-sufficient in this area so that we aren't behind the eight ball and we don't have data. You're making the initiative to create our own data.
Right. And that's one of the things, later on, yeah, I'm going to, I think I covered everything. So, next series of Regents' Exams are the Geometry Exam and the Algebra II Exam. Again, same sort of commentary that I had before, we're looking at 76%. That 76% represents the number of students who got at least a 65. In Geometry, there were 57 students who received an appeal, which was 15%. And in Algebra II, there were 17 students that received the appeal, which was 6% of the number of students. And again, the reason why the numbers start to decline in terms of the number of students who take it is because depending upon the type of Regents' Exam that they are working towards, they may only need to pass one Regents' Exam. So some students choose not to go and continue to take the Regents' Level courses to get their math credit or to even have to sit and take the exam because if they're only going for a basic Regents' Diploma, then that's not something that is a requirement. Questions on that? Biology, Living Environment, again, this is one of the courses that's offered duly both in the middle school and the high school. 78% of the students were proficient on the bio side. There were 436 students who took the exam. Again, there is no open enrollment at this moment in, on the biology side. So again, we basically had the five sections worth of biology. However, you'll notice on the middle school side, starting in June of 2014, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, we offered duly both sections of biology as well as sections of Earth Science. And then, starting in 2018, we exclusively offered biology, which is the reason why the number of students increased on the biology side. However, again, we had 61 students who received the appeal in biology at the high school, which represents 14%. One other item to note, similar to Algebra, there were students last year, June of 2021, who did complete Algebra and Biology in the middle school. So the 436 students who sat at the high school to take Biology does not include the 106 students from the previous year who were exempted because they took Biology in eighth grade at the end when the Regents' Exams were offered on a limited basis. So that's part of the reason why the numbers are a little bit less for the bio exam than overall. Does that make sense of the way that I'm explaining it? Okay. Questions?
And you said the middle school students, 100% of them passed?
100%.
And they did not ask, no one in that group got an appeal?
No appeals.
Okay.
Yep, 100% passing. Yeah, and again, I wanted to verbally give the appeal information, but in terms of the visuals, I wanted to give the numbers that we're anticipating are going to appear on our report card so that way it doesn't give a false reality of what the actual numbers Earth Science, again, similarly, we had through June of 2017, June of 2014, 2015, 2016 was when we had a group of students at the middle school also taking. So, when, we started in June of 20, I believe it was June of 2018, students who had to take Earth Science in the high school, whether they took it in ninth grade because they took Biology in eighth grade, or in 10th grade because they took Biology in ninth grade, Earth Science was no longer being offered at the middle school, so all students had to take Earth Science up at the high school. So that's why you see, as the number of students goes on, more students took the exam. In terms of appeals, 91 students received an appeal out of the 507, which overall is 18% of students who received the appeal. One of the things that we did notice, similar, for a basic Regents' Exam, you're only required to pass, for a basic Regents' Diploma, sorry, you're only required to pass one science Regents' Exam. So what happens is if a student took Biology, they wouldn't necessarily need to be required to sit and take the Earth Science Regents' Exam. And we actually had 11 students who sat for the course but didn't sit for the Regents' Exam, but because of the requirements and because it wasn't included in their final overall average any longer, they were not required to have to sit and take the exam. So they ended up just, they completed the course, they passed the course, but they ended up not sitting for the exam. I bring that up because you're going to see that more pronounced when I get to Chemistry So Chemistry, we had 349 students. The proficiency rate was 71%. We had 77 students that received the appeal in Chemistry, which is 22%. Physics, I want to call your attention to that. We had 54% proficiency. In past years, when I did this presentation, I would often point to the number of students that we had that would sit for the Physics Regents' Exam, which included not only kids that took Physics Regents' Level. Historically, our AP Physics students also would sit for the Regents' Exams. However, one of the things that has happened over the last few years is there's been a separation of the state physics curriculum and the AP Physics curriculum. And one of the things that we found this year was, out of the 102 students that are taking AP College Physics, 99 of them chose not to sit for the Regents' Exam this year because ultimately, they didn't need it in order to be able to receive that graduation credit. So, in the end, that's the reason why in June of 2019, we had 252 students sit for the Physics Regents' Exam, but in June of 2022, only 90 students chose to end up sitting and taking the exam. The majority of the students who didn't take it were those students that were sitting in the AP College Physics course. Questions?
What, if any, breakdown is there in that for the open enrollment honors piece of it?
What do you mean?
Is there any differentiation that you can give as far as, like, the students that were in the 2022 cohort?
So...
As to whether or not that was part of the open enrollment?
Sure. So overall, we had 208 students who were in Regents' Level Physics this past year. Out of that, 90 of them sat and took the exam. There was an additional 102 students that were in AP College Physics, but AP College Physics is not open enrollment at this point in time...
Okay.
Because there are math prerequisites that kids need. Open enrollment means I can just freely come in and sign up to take the course with no prerequisites attached. AP College Physics, there are certain requirements for the students in order to be able to sit and be successful in that class, namely math requirements. So, the open enrollment for AP courses was predominantly on the ELA and Social Studies side, not on the math and science side because of that sequencing of skills that's needed for kids. Does that make sense of what I'm saying?
Yes, I just want to make sure that that's not what was impacting the number.
Correct, nope.
Right.
Nope. So, Global History. Global History is typically administered to students at the end of their sophomore year. We had 594 students who sat and took the exam. 90% of them received a passing grade that tested proficient. 37 out of the 394 received an appeal, which overall is 6%. Now, I want to call your attention to a couple of things. Going back to what you were talking about earlier about the shifting of requirements from state Ed, I put hashtags next to 2014, 2015, 2016, and 2017 because those years were the Global History and Geography I exam, which it has now been named because that was the original Global History and Geography exam. The state adopted a new set of standards. They then transitioned from the original set of standards to the new set of standards. For two years, they offered a transition exam, moving from one set of standards to another set of standards. That transition exam was administered in June of 2018 and June of 2019, which is what the star is for. June of 2022, officially, it was supposed to be June of 2020, but because those exams were canceled, June of 2022 was the first administration of the Global History and Geography II exam, which is the exam that's going to now be administered into the future. So, for comparative purposes, it's not, you can 100% compare apples to apples in terms of these because there's three sets of different exams that were administered in this timeframe. Does that make sense of what I'm saying? So, over those years, over that transition, the teachers had to develop a multi-year plan to go from Standards A through the transition, including the transitional exam, to the new set of standards, which ultimately was administered in June of 2022. Following this slide, I typically present on the U.S. History Regents... on the US History Regents results, which is given in junior year. But that was the exam that was canceled this past early June. So that exam would have been also the first exam of the new social studies standards. So.
Framework.
Yes, the new, the new social studies framework technically is what they, is what they call it.
And that exam wasn't canceled because of COVID. It was canceled because of content.
Because of content, correct. Yep, yep. Questions so far? The last exam is the Common Core English exam. That exam is typically given to students at some point during their, during their junior year. You'll notice the number of students along the bottom, 422, 375, 365, 244. Typically, in pre-COVID years, we had certain populations of kids, the AP kids, the students in the honors and accelerated courses. They would take the exam in January in preparation of other advanced exams that they were taking, AP exams that they would potentially take at the end of the school year. They would sit for the English Regents exam in January, which is the reason why, and that's a few hundred kids, why June of 2019 and back had lower numbers. Since the January of 2022 exams were canceled, all students their junior year needed to sit for the Common Core English exam in June, which is why we had 563 students sit and take that exam. We had 90% students pass that exam. 27 out of the 563 received an appeal, which is overall 5%. Yep.
Do we have any students taking it in sophomore year?
At this moment in time, not really, no.
In the past?
We've actually had that conversation where there are some courses that students could potentially sit for that exam. The, the reason why we haven't officially advanced that yet is because the Regents exams, whether they're calculated in the final averages or not, appears on student transcripts. We want to make sure that we're not setting students up for not putting their best foot forward in offering it their sophomore year, where.
Correct me if I'm mistaken, though, on the transcript, only the highest grade goes on?
Correct, but they would have to take it multiple times.
Right.
Where even, you know, even if, you know, if they got a 75 their sophomore year, they could potentially sit and take the exam.
For a higher score.
That is exactly right.
In June, yes.
Yep.
And this number here, does that reflect any of the open enrollment? Or it's reflected?
It, it, it does. The only thing that it reflects, you wouldn't see that impact on the open enrollment here because that's only between Regents ELA, honors ELA, and the AP courses, which is all blended together in that 563, whether the students made that choice or not. Does that make sense of what I'm saying?
It does. And to that point, though, that if they are in that cohort, 90% of them had a 65 or grade.
Right. So the way that we would be able to present on that moving forward is if students sit and take the exam in January, potentially more students could potentially opt to go into an AP course or a college-level course or an honors course because of open enrollment. And you might see, moving forward, if we have the Regents exams administered in January, this coming January, maybe lower students that sit for the exam in June because more students due to open enrollment sit for the exam in January. Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay. So I'm, I'm going to get a little technical now on, you know, we've been talking a lot about data and goals and, and information that we have access to and how we make decisions instructionally. And one of the things that I wanted to share with everyone is a sample report that we get when, and this applies to all various exams. I happen to pick the Algebra I exam. This report is a report for the high school that takes all of the questions by the Regents exam and breaks it down by the various standard and which questions are given based upon that specific standard. So if you look, the first one is perform arithmetic operations on polynomials. There were two questions on the Regents exam linked to that standard. Multiple choice question number 17 and critical response question number 28. And it gives you the percentage of our students that were successful on that particular question. Some questions, and this kind of plays into what I was speaking about earlier in terms of some of the instructional decisions that the teachers needed to make this past year on, what do we historically see in terms of topics that are often seen on the exams that the teachers want to really make sure that they spend more time on versus other standards that may not be as emphasized as much on the exams for them to spend less time on in order to maximize instruction on what they will potentially experience on the Regents exams. So this is an example of one type of report. It gives the overall performance of our kids in relation to each of the standards. Questions? This is another example of, of an item report where it gives every single question listed by, given by the exam, not by standard, but by how the students responded. So basically, what it shows is these are multiple choice questions 1, 2, and 3. Zero is the number of students that, that, because it's not a critical response, that receives zero credit. That applies to only the critical response questions, which I'll talk about in a minute. It shows how many kids answered question 1 and the percentage of students that, that answered that question. So for multiple choice 1, 29 students chose response 1, because it's multiple choice, you know, response A, which is overall 60%. Response 2, B, was the correct answer. We had 359 students who chose that response, which represents 79%. So 79% of the students got that question correct. How many kids chose response 3 and response 4? Now, this information is important because, A, it allows the staff to drill down to what are the choices that our kids are picking? And maybe is there a reason why kids are, if they're getting the question wrong, choosing a certain answer over another answer? We can also get these reports at the regional level and at the state level. So we can make a determination, okay, the majority of our kids chose question, chose response number 1. Response number 2 was the correct answer. Why did our kids pick that? Well, across the state, we're realizing that a high percentage of kids got that question wrong. So maybe that's an issue regarding the question itself rather than our curriculum. Or wow, the majority of kids across the state got this question right, but in Monroe Woodbury, it seems that they didn't get that question right. We need to go back to the curriculum and we need to make some adjustments based upon how we're reinforcing that particular topic.
Is that a, is that a manual process? Or is there some kind of summary or?
So we, the Regents exams are, are scanned.
Right.
So, so, you know, they're, they're like a Scantron. So basically, this is automatic.
No, I mean more of which questions to really dive more into.
So, so we have to go through and we have to drill into that. And we, we look at each of these, we look at each of these. But it's based upon these reports, which are readily accessible. And it can also be aggregated by, you know, for an individual teacher. I can go back and I, I have the ability to be able to look and see how my particular students, you know, maybe it's something that I'm looking at in terms of my own individual classroom practice as well.
Right. That's great.
Similarly, I blew up the section on critical response. These are like the extended word problems that kids have to answer. It shows the number of kids, the percentage of kids that got zero points. Response 1, because it's no longer multiple choice, it's how many got 1 point and how many got 2 points. So there are 2-point questions on this particular exam. This is from Algebra II. On this particular exam, there are 1, 2-point questions and 4-point questions as well as some 5-point question. It shows you the percentage of students that got each of those ranges of points on each of those individual questions. So for critical response question 2, it's a 2-point, I'm sorry. It goes from 2, 4, and 6, not 5, I apologize. Question number 30, 45% of the students got 0 points. 36% of the students got 1 point. 19% of the students got 2 points. And again, the teachers have the ability to be able to go back. Questions number 33 and 34 on this exam, only 5% and 10% respectively of the students got 0, which means that the vast majority of students got at least some points on that question. So the teachers can go back and they can look. For question number 34, for example, 88% of the kids only got, I'm sorry, 88 students got 1 point. Why did 88 students only get 1 point? Is there a way for us to be able to shift things for them to be able to go from 1 point to 2 points or 3, 2 points to 3 points? Does that make sense? And again, this type of analysis is available for all of the various Regents exams based upon standards in each of the content areas. Yep.
I just want to make a comment. Several years ago, I made the comment that if we weren't getting this kind of feedback, how can we possibly improve with this feedback?
Right.
There's many avenues to improvement.
Right. Yep. So next steps, and this kind of goes back to the work that's happening within the school district and tying it back to the district goals. Obviously, we have various professional development days that are coming up and the staff, they dig through the results to see how we're doing and see what that impact is. Then they go back to the curriculum. When we say standards alignment, you know, sometimes I, I always worry about saying that because it gives the impression that the, the curriculum is not aligned to standards. And that's not the case. Certainly, we teach to the standards. However, like as I demonstrated with the, in, in the, on the Global History exam, the standards evolve. If you look back, the Algebra exam, the Geometry exam, those are still, that's Common Core Algebra. And we are in the process of shifting to the next-gen math standards. But the exam themselves are still aligned to the previous set of standards. So we are mid-transition to that. So when we do curriculum work and standards alignment, we're making sure that the, the material that we're teaching in the classroom is something that is ultimately going to be aligned to what the assessments are that kids are going to be expected to sit for. We use the item analysis to look at the strengths and weaknesses in the curriculum. What are areas that we can tighten up? What are areas that we are doing really, really well on? How can we expand that? It's also looking at creating alternatives. And this kind of weaves into some of the discussions that we've been having regarding open enrollment. I know at the last Board of Education meeting, Mrs. Rodriguez spoke about, you know, looking at creating some summer programs for kids that may want to do some additional accelerated work. How do we find ways to be able to support students in accomplishing that and helping them, you know, be successful? When I was speaking with Jane Nigelski, the Math Department Chair, he, the, the eighth-grade math team has common assessments that they administer, and they just administered their first exam. And he was looking at students that didn't pass the exam. And one of the things that he noticed was, it was students who were new to Monroe Woodbury, meaning coming from a variety of different places versus students who have been in Monroe Woodbury for X number of years because of the math curriculum that they received. He felt that they did stronger. How do we find supports for students? And again, it's, I don't want to confuse students new to Monroe Woodbury with newcomers. We've talked about newcomers, students that are new to the country. It's purely students from a variety of different places that are new to Monroe Woodbury, maybe from out of state that weren't taught in the same set of New York State standards. There could be a variety of different reasons. But are there different support systems that we can put into place for kids to be able to get them to where we want them to be? Obviously, the continued conversation about common assessments. The benefit of common assessments is that rather than waiting and digging through the item analysis on the Regents exam to make adjustments for the subsequent school year and curriculum, when the eighth-grade math team administers their first common assessment and they look at the results and they say, wow, you know something? Here's a couple of things that we noticed in that exam. We might be able to do some additional support for students now, before the end of the school year, to be able to support them and get them up to speed rather than having it be just a culminating assessment at the end of the school year. And obviously, we continue to go back to tying it into good professional development. We're back to, you know, doing a lot of really good work in terms of providing instructional support to our staff and continuing this work, sending to teachers on, you know, various in-services and, and things that are being offered about the shift to new standards. A lot happening. Questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Yep.
But first, I have to put Ms. Soto on the spot if I can share something positive from the BLC yesterday. Okay. So I was able to attend the Building Leadership Committee meeting yesterday at the high school. And I would love to just be able to share with the board because it incorporates some of this with next steps and a lot of the conversations that we've been having over the last, you know, probably at least the last two to three years. And one of the pieces that Ms. Soto let us know yesterday was at the high school level, one of the next steps that they're doing with this data is they're able to incorporate a system of checks and balances that if the student is perhaps falling below a certain, I believe she said a color-coded system, red, yellow, green, those students that are in the red and the students that were in the yellow will without a doubt be addressed sooner and they'll be able to grasp that. To Suzanne's point, what are we doing with the information? So being able to actually look at it and research it and then bring it back to the students and get them the help that they need, I think is what we've kind of been looking for all along.
And that's, and that's, again, sort of tying it back to that idea of common assessments. In order to be able to track our, the progress of our students, obviously, teachers are administering tests. But the tests are only as good as the level that they're being administered, where if each teacher is administering a different assessment, that is only assessment of what's going on within that specific classroom. And by administering a consistent assessment, and it's not like there is one magical assessment that we, you know, need to be administering. The Algebra, the team of Algebra teachers can sit down and they can pull together all of the various Chapter 1 tests and arrive at what they believe is the right evaluation of the first topic that they're teaching within the program. That way, we can measure more horizontally across the board of how students are doing rather than just isolating it at the particular individual classroom level.
Do the teachers have some kind of common prep time where they can get together and develop those assessments?
So one of the things that we've done is.
That's difficult.
Well, one of the things that we did, we've done this year is, and Mrs. Rodriguez spoke about this at the last, at the last Board of Ed meeting, was we've woven in a number of, of half-days across the school year for that work, where they have some departments, some teachers have, but not having every single Algebra teacher available every single day at the same time. They do have monthly department meetings that they can get together at, but those half-hour, those half-day chunks sprinkled throughout the school year is really going to be earmarked for that type of work.
Development. That's wonderful.
Right.
Good to hear.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine.
With the waivers that, I'm probably saying the wrong word, for the students where they could appeal if they got below a certain.
Yep.
That's through, you said the June.
2023.
23. So we won't see any normalization of scores until after the administration of that exam, so the following.
No, but I, again, for all those students watching, in the end, that special appeal.
They're all watching, Eric.
It's riveting stuff, I know. I, 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 I'm sure they're all captivated, glued to the TV. TV, right? Computer, right? We're on YouTube, glued to the computer. The special appeal is different than the exemption. When the Regents exams were canceled, no matter what you would have potentially done on that exam, When the Regents' exams were canceled, no matter what you would have potentially done on that exam, an E was given to everybody. For a student who says, I only need to get a fifty rather than the sixty-five, even if the essay appears on your transcript, that means that you got between a fifty and a sixty-four. So anyone in the future who would be reviewing your transcript, even though the number is not there, they will know, if you're coming from New York State, that the special appeal is somewhere between a fifty and a sixty-four.
So behooves you to take.
One hundred percent. And you can, if you got a grade that you're unhappy with, even though you might have fulfilled the requirement for your diploma, you can sit, similar to what you were saying, and retake the exam and get a better grade and choose to have that higher grade put on your transcript.
And Eric, is that also then this year, including the exemption portion for us, including the Regents' score in their overall GPA? Or has that not been decided yet?
Well, as of right now, we're talking about yes, but.
Meaning, yes, your Regents' exam score will be included.
Right now, we, we, we are still talking about doing what we were planning on doing last year. If there's going to be a January Regents' exam, we're hoping to be able to administer some form of, of midterm-like, Regents-like, you know, tool mid-year. And then final exams and Regents' exams at the end of the year. But again, that's.
Well, I think that's important because for the kids that are watching, they need to know that, you know, it's, like we said earlier, that some of the kids, I mean, full disclosure, I said that's my kid. There's no pressure last year.
Right.
You know, how you scored on that exam, it was kind of just like a practice test as far as I was concerned.
And, and last year, our, our intent was right up until the first week of June, it was going to be included in there. We did, even though we did fore, have to forego the midterm exams because the January twenty-twenty-two Regents' exams were canceled, we removed that percentage and put it into, and, and stretched it out across the other quarters. But the plan was still to move forward with the, with the Regents and the final exams, but at, at that time, just based upon everything else that, that was happening, it, it just didn't, it didn't make sense. So.
When is that decision made?
When is that decision made? Um, well.
It's possible.
Right, right, right now, I mean, right now, it's as of October twelfth at eight-thirty PM. I, I mean, you know, that, that, like, there, there are so many factors because, you know, last year, we, we anticipated the Regents' exams being administered, and then all of a sudden, like, and, and like you said, it wasn't COVID-related. The State Ed Department came, I think it was, um, they, they canceled them because of the content that was in the exam and the fear of some of the event, the event that took place in Buffalo, and it might be triggering for certain students, and, and that was sort of the, that's what they said. So it, it was, yeah.
I think that's a nice question. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have, so do we, your, your, the test scores that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have regional and state and how we compare to those two?
We do.
So could we, can I at least see that?
I can, I can share, I can certainly shout out to the board.
I just would like to know how we're, we're compared to our region and our state.
Yep.
You know, I, I get to your point, seventy-five.
Yep.
But if, you know, if Middletown is at ninety.
Right.
You know, and O'Neill's at fifty, you know.
Normally, normally, the, the, this presentation I typically have done in the past later on in the school year because I also weave in graduation rates from the previous year, which is usually something that appears in the newspaper. So, um, you know, part of the reason why we haven't come out and spoken about the three-to-way testing results, that's something that's planned for a future meeting, is because we wait for the official release of that by the State Ed Department. So we, that's, that's why for, for this one, I'm typically focusing on just Monroe Woodbury, but I can share that report with.
You can see it online under the New York State stuff.
Yeah, well, this, these results are not, I, I don't believe they're, they're available on the State Ed data website. They will be. Yeah, they will be. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. That was a great review.
Okey-dokey.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to the next item on the agenda is the discussion for Bosie's capital project vote. Um, I, I, I'm going to suggest we have a conversation around that before we actually vote on anything. I had attended the NISPA meeting. There was information provided. They went around the room to ask level of support for the project. A number of, uh, school districts, uh, and I spoke up as well, that we had concerns with the level of transparency, that we didn't receive certain information, that, um, our, you know, head of finance still was waiting for open questions that were not responded to. Uh, they did not provide any additional information at that meeting. So, um, I have been in contact, or others have contacted me from other schools and have indicated what they were looking to do. Um, so I would like to put it out there. I, I don't see myself being able to support the level of budget that they're asking for, of twenty-one point five million for our district. Um, with the lack of information that was provided, the lack of transparency. They knew this vote was coming up and it was planned for, I believe, at the beginning of the year. Um, there's a lot of concerns with how this money's going to be spent. It's a significant, a hundred and sixty million dollars is the ask. And while I support C-Tech students and all of the other programs, I have someone in my household that's going to C-Tech, loves it. That's the, that's not the issue. The support of the kids that go there is absolutely paramount to, to me. I have a concern, and this is just my opinion, um, that, you know, I just don't think there's enough information.
Not me.
I want to take it Suzanne.
Sorry.
Answer and say hello.
Aren't you supposed to be good with technology?
I, I fairly, I'm failing in all levels.
You just need to bargain.
Bargain is the laughing hardest.
No comments.
I didn't know if anyone.
Android, so.
I didn't know if anyone had any other comments or questions. I, I don't know that I can really answer much. They didn't talk about a lot of the details. Um, what they claimed is possibly that the particular person who presented the plan to us wasn't the same as some other districts got, so therefore, we got different information, or maybe not the same presentation, from a quality standpoint. But that's concerning, um, because they should put someone out in front of the district, in any district, that can answer the questions, will follow up, because we don't expect them to know everything at the moment that they're asked. But when you're presenting a plan of a hundred and sixty million dollars, you really have to come in loaded and ready to go. And, um, and there was a number of districts concerned that, um, they weren't.
I think the way you articulated it is probably the same way Stacy and I, when we went and talked to them, almost exactly the way you characterize it, is we support Bosie's. We have students who go to Bosie's, so obviously, we're going to, you know, we feel we, we should support Bosie's. The, the question came up as to, um, what are you going to do with that amount of money? Are you going to expand programs that our students are looking to, to take that maybe were waitlisted on some of them? And it did, I, I, I don't know that anyone.
I don't even know if we got an official, an official answer that there would or would not be an increase based on the size of our school district and the number of students that we send. Um, I know for me personally, I, I disagree with their, their process of how they come up with that number because I feel that Monroe Woodbury, being as large as we are, to hear that other component school districts are sending at least the same, if not maybe a couple, like ten less than what we are, and their overall numbers are a fraction of what we are, is why we have such a waitlist.
Yes.
Um, so that was one piece. And then I just want to ask you, I don't want to put you on the spot, or maybe Patrick can explain it. But there was a piece of communication that got put out, I believe, after our last board meeting.
Yep.
And in my, again, this is just my opinion, I'm not speaking for the board as a whole, but in my opinion, it was disingenuous because the piece of information that came out from Bosie's stated that all of the districts voted to approve the DASNE, um, financial component. And that is not accurate.
Yeah, I had responded to Elsie on that.
Yeah, so if you.
We know the district that.
So if you could maybe clarify what that means to the public, because that's out there that, and we, they're like, oh, you guys took a vote on it? And we, we technically didn't take a vote because we didn't have to take a vote.
Yes.
But I think the assumption from Bosie's was made that we would have voted yes about the, about DASNE, if I'm understanding it correctly, so.
And that's my understanding. It's the Dormitory Association of State of New York.
Right, Dormitory Authority of State of New York, right. And so there was two ways to finance this, the interministerial agreement, and all the districts had to agree to that. One district did not, so that was not.
So the rest of the districts did not need to vote. That's what's important for the public to understand. We never, we never even had to vote because another component school district voted, and when it was one, it was done.
That's correct. You could, everybody, it had to be unanimous to use IMA. It was not, therefore, it had to go DASNE. And actually, I would say the DASNE route, if you recall, was a little more expensive.
It is significantly more expensive.
To Monroe Woodbury was twenty-two point six million.
Right.
Which equates to be even a little higher than at the presentations, about a million ninety-six thousand dollars annually.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's net, less of, of any Bosie's aid.
And there is another clarification. We are not asked if we want this to be, if we want this project to move forward or not. That was not our question. School districts didn't get to vote on that. If you're a component district and they're moving forward with their project, the only thing we had a choice to vote on was whether we went DASNE or we decided to, to fund it, um, on our own. That was the only question. And again, we were told we did not have to make that decision because a school district had already said that they were going to, they voted the DASNE route, which meant that we all had to go the DASNE route. But ours, the component districts are not asked if they want to, uh, have this project move forward. We're told that this project is moving forward. Our only question is, how will you pay for it?
And Patrick, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about a half a percent change to the tax rate annually going forward.
It, it's about, it's a little more than half to the budget, and it's about point eight-five percent to the levy.
Okay.
So it's nearly a percentage point on the levy and half a percentage point on our budget.
To the tax.
And the reality.
Does that affect the two percent cap, tax cap?
It's an exclusion, so it doesn't.
It doesn't.
Does not, no.
Thank you for clarifying.
I'll piggyback on what was already said, that, um, you know, I, I have a hard time supporting with the disproportionality that Monroe Woodbury is asked to pay. You know, although the services that Bosie's provided are, you know, fantastic and a, and a great asset to have, it, it's a large amount to ask taxpayers to come up with, a- as well as we have our own in-house, uh, capital improvement projects that we're going to be asking the public to support as well. Um, you know, how, how can we ask them to, you know, do it twice? Um, and I think a lot of the projects that we have here in the district are imperative to get done in a, in a timely fashion to make sure that the buildings and everything are, are up to snuff to continue to, you know, educate here at home.
But the, so the reality is, though, that with or without our support, the vote goes forward, and if it's a yay vote, then we have no choice but to.
Correct.
Finance the project.
Yes.
And it's an open vote, so where I understand the flyer, you can show up to any school district in Orange County that, one of the component districts, and vote. As long as it takes the vote, it passes.
What's our responsibility for promoting or not promoting this?
They're promoting it. They're sending a three-page color flyer.
Are we able to?
Did you get the flyer?
Just promote it, so to speak?
I, I don't.
I mean, it, it's to inform, I mean, they will promote it in their own best interest, to make sure that it's approved. We want to make sure that, you know, our, our constituents are aware of what this will cost and that, you know, we have other needs that are more present, that we need to take care of within, you know, Monroe Woodbury.
And we need to say vote no, in essence.
Yes. I'd like to read, uh, something that was drafted for discussion, so if, if you bear with me. Um, "Dear members of the Monroe Woodbury community, you may hear discussions in the community related to a proposed Orange Ulster Bosie's capital project and referendum vote scheduled for Tuesday, October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. I am writing to explain Monroe Woodbury's position as it relates to the upcoming community vote. Representatives from OU Bosie's attended an MW board meeting on August third, twenty-twenty-two, to present an overview of the proposed project and explain the financial responsibility of the school district." And that there will be a view presentation here. It will be linked if we do it. The hundred and sixty million dollar project would be financed by Bosie's component school districts, which includes Monroe Woodbury. Based on state calculations, Monroe Woodbury's portion of the project would equal twenty-two point six million or thirteen point seven percent of the total project cost. The OU Bosie's proposed capital project would increase the Monroe Woodbury Central School District general fund budget by approximately one million ninety-six thousand or point five-four percent, and would increase our tax levy by point eight-five. Monroe Woodbury would be required to pay the one million ninety-six each year of the borrowing agreement, which is projected at twenty years. During the meeting, board members asked several questions, including but not limited to how many MW students are currently served by Bosie's programs, and how many additional seats would be made available to MW as a result of the project. Since the August presentation, we have learned that a hundred and sixty MW students currently attend Bosie's programs. We have not received confirmation from OU Bosie's representatives about the number of additional seats that would be made available specifically to MW if the project is approved. At this time, the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education cannot endorse the proposed hundred and sixty million dollar project due to lack of transparency as well as limited information and communication from Bosie's since the initial presentation was made to the board. To be clear, we fully support the CTE and special education programs offered by OU Bosie's. The hundred and sixty students who are currently enrolled in the Bosie's programs benefit from a quality educational program. However, as a Board of Education charged representing the families and community members of this district, we cannot justify asking taxpayers to invest a sizable amount of money when Bosie's has not been forthcoming with information, and we are unclear as to, to the specific benefits to our students and families. Please reach out to me directly, and my email would be on there with any questions or concerns.
I think that's very well written to all of our community.
It would go out to the community if we so agreed to do so.
Can you just clarify the date that you're at the beginning?
Yes, I think the date is incorrect. I think that's the old date. They changed it to the twenty-fifth.
Vote is technically the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And what's our participation rate? And is that something we want to include in there to show the difference? Well, thirteen percent of, of the bill, but.
We are, we are second behind Middletown in the district.
And how much do we use it, though, is what I'm saying?
Well, I can tell you that, um, the Warwick School District has a hundred and sixty students as well.
They send the same number of students that we do at a, at a lesser cost.
What percentage are they paying?
Right.
Uh, I don't remember the number, but if it was eleven or twelve million compared to the twenty-two.
Right. And in other words, if we can demonstrate even further, I, I don't know if you want to put it in there, that, that we're, we're using it at similar levels, you know, at whatever that percentage is.
One thing you have to be careful of is the type of students, right? Because some students are a lot more expensive than others, so you have to be.
Right.
You have to be careful with pure head counts.
Okay.
Right? Because it might.
Ask them to clarify.
Well, yeah, but I understand. I'm, I'm just saying, from our standpoint of, of communicating to the public, you could have one student that costs twenty thousand and one that costs ten. I, I don't know what the numbers are.
What is that based on?
You probably.
No, I don't think, but I, Dawn, I think that's, that, the CTE program, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, it's a, it's a flat RE. I think what you're referring to is the special education component. That piece of it is different based on the students' needs.
Right, and, and.
But this hundred and sixty is the CTE kids that we're sending at a flat RE.
No, a hundred and sixty is.
Special ed, it's special ed, it's combined.
I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty is what?
It's both. It's special ed and CTE students, yeah.
I think we'll link to their own slide showing how much of a proportion that we're paying as Monroe Woodbury compared to the other districts would be.
I think that's in the presentation.
Yeah.
We had that, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's on, it'll, there'll be a hyperlink in there, so when it gets.
And yet, just for further clarification, and yet, if the residents of our district vote against it, but residents of other districts vote in favor of it, we could still get stuck with this.
Correct, correct.
So we would have to incur, because the other thing that's concerning is.
We would incur the cost no matter what.
But if people don't go out and vote no and they stay home, it's worse.
Can we put that in the letter, like we, we encourage a no vote?
We, we can do that. That is part of the discussion.
So I agree with Dawn, so I think it should be bold, right? And if I put my marketing hat on, right, so I would start with the sentence with vote no.
Or in the subject line.
Most people, most people aren't going to read that entire thing. They're not.
Exactly. It is a well-written.
Very well-written.
Well, it is, but they're going to stop at the first sentence. Stop. You want me to vote no? Okay, and then if I need.
We need you to vote, and we need you to.
So, you know, whether it's in big letters on the top and it just says vote no, and then you have the wonderfully crafted letter underneath it, but that's how we market.
And we use our size to speak, to speak our, our statement. We don't support the subject.
And I think having that comment on there.
As long as we agree.
About how important it is to make sure that people go out and vote.
Yeah, that's true.
Because sitting home will make sure that it passes.
I think we need to include that. Yeah, because people. In the letter and then very specifically at top.
Can I add that you, I'm sorry, Elsie, that you put in there that it's, again, it's going to confuse people because that vote takes place in this building, and it is from twelve to eight. To Dawn's point, you can go to, there's a list of them. It'll be on the flyer.
Yeah.
On the back of the flyer that people receive will list all of the places that they can vote. But for Monroe Woodbury, it is this building, so I don't want that to be a confusion, that people are showing up at Central Valley, which is where we normally cast our votes.
True.
So we can list the ad center with the address.
Vote here.
And the hours are not what normal, what our normal votes are.
It's not six AM to nine. Can we send out a text to our community to just vote no?
We can do, if this, if that is a desire of the board, we can, we can do, right? We can do.
The more we push no, the better.
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
I think there's, there's another piece that, that Patrick and I talked about, which is, how did you come to that allocation, right? So.
Yeah, and, and so I, I can't even remember, actually. I think I had emailed the board. The, the allocation methodology is R-WATA, resident, residence, rated, average, daily attendance, basically enrollment, right? So that's why it's so high for us, and, you know, it's not.
Is that our overall enrollment?
Mm-hmm.
It's our, our WATA number, which is like a, a metric for enrollment, basically. You know, so it's our enrollment, our school.
Not in our, our enrollment in Bosie's, our overall.
Overall enrollment. That's right, district enrollment. So what we had said is, when we look at the number of students, if you, if you look at that number, twenty-two point six million on a per pupil basis, it's like a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars per pupil. So we had suggested, what about some sort of other weighted average, where you took utilization, as, as you were just saying, Anthony, you know, something else into consideration. You could weight it as fifty percent R-WATA, fifty percent the number of students, you know, utilization. And so the question was, is that legally permissible? And so we waited, and, and there's an update, Mike. I got an answer today. We waited over a month for an answer, and we got a call today. We asked our attorneys, all the law says is that it must be equitable, on an equitable basis.
So if they did that for us, they'd have to do that for everyone.
Well, it would be a different methodology. That would be applicable to everyone.
Yeah.
And, and for the most part, these are rare events, so the attorney that answered said, I'm aware of four instances in my career that this, and they used R-WATA every time. So, you know, that could be something where we say, you know, it's not equitable, the way you're doing it for us, for Monroe Woodbury, and we're suggesting something different.
If I understand correctly, Warwick spending ten million dollars less.
Correct.
Same amount of students.
Yes.
That doesn't sound very equitable to me.
Right.
And you could go to Minisync, and they have the same number of students.
Yeah.
Right.
Minisync is a much smaller school than us.
So we should use our number that we have to vote it down. If we get our community to vote no, I mean, we, we have the advantage here, right?
Yeah.
Over all the other component school districts, we take the, we take the no vote.
And, and we do have a little bit of time.
Well, how many school districts are there?
Seventeen, right?
Seventeen?
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Oh, I thought it was seventeen.
Have, have we heard similar sentiments from other school districts?
Well, you have to remember that certain. Well, you have to remember that certain school districts, if you're a school like Florida and you have, how many kids Florida has?
Twelve.
Thirteen. We'd do that. We have, they have maybe, I don't know.
Florida's RWADA is eight.
Nine hundred students and it's going to cost them less than a million dollars and they can send us maybe the same number of kids. It's a good deal.
Is tuxedo also included in that?
Yes, they are.
I don't even want to know how little they would have to pay.
Isn't there one big one that isn't? Is it Newburgh?
Newburgh is not a component district.
City.
They have their own programs. They do, they are not part of.
What about Kirish Chao? Are they part of?
They are part of it as well.
But they have 119 students.
How many?
119.
Their RWADA is 119. Florida's RWADA is 858. That's the students.
And what's tuxedo's RWADA?
245.
Again, would we have legal recourse to challenge this is it was inequitable and we should not be required to pay an inequitable amount?
Well, an attorney would probably tell you, you can sue for anything. And if you want to challenge it, if you want to challenge it, you can challenge it.
We can hold it up for years.
Right. It would be, I think it would be an uphill battle, right?
And I think. Cheaper than 21 million, though.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Very true. Well, we'd have to get a legal opinion.
Yeah, we would, we would.
So it sounds like there's agreement, no vote.
No vote.
The letter's good. We'll make a couple modifications, putting no, no, no.
Do we need to vote on this?
Vote no.
We need to have a vote on this?
No.
Is there a way that we could, other school districts who agree with us who also want to vote no?
I talked to one other school district, but the board was a little bit un.
Was she washing?
They were, they were schismed, you know, and I don't know how many. I didn't ask. But, so they came out with a more neutral stance that it wasn't from them, this wasn't part of their budget, and that it would impact future projects. So they tried to more educate, but in our case, if we're unanimous, which it looks like we are.
Well, I would just say, maybe it's something we could look into if there's other districts of the 17 or 22, whatever it is. If they're on board, I think it looks better, obviously. I mean, there's a counter to that, of course, but it looks better if eight, 21 school districts are saying vote no. So that it kind of gets out at the greater good of, hey, this is what's best for all of our students, not just Monroe Woodbury, but everyone who's there.
It should be that they're having their meetings now.
I mean, it's a little disappointing.
The notice I got last week was.
Hide the carrot they've been.
The notice I got last week was right after someone's board meeting, so they could all still be meeting about it.
And there's nothing, sorry, I was just going to say, there's nothing that doesn't allow us to speak out against their vote, right? Like we can openly, publicly.
No, you, no, you, you can say.
We do not support this?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
And we encourage you to vote no?
Yes.
That is, if that is your message, then yes.
Could we say that, you know, we need your no vote because the yeses will make it pat, like.
Absolutely.
We need to say that. Do we know, is there a district somewhat similar to us, large district, little participation? Do we know what they're voting?
Yes.
Are they voting similar to us?
No.
Oh.
I don't like that district.
That's not good. That's not good.
Yep.
I mean, ultimately, when the project's done, it sounds like it would be a wonderful thing, but.
But it also might be better to keep things close to the vest and just get out the vote from our own.
Let's be equitable about it.
Community.
Yep.
We'll do our part.
Tip our hand to other districts who might want to see this.
We'll do our part and see if they do this.
Well, we're on video.
Well, hopefully other, hopefully other districts are watching and they see us leading the pack.
Together.
If we put this out, it'll. You know what I mean? And they kind of get the gist of what we're trying to do here and they join in, maybe, you know, some of those swings that, right? Like, hey, Monroe Woodbury is going no with this.
Well, can we share this?
Courage to follow suit.
I think sometimes you have to be the first to.
Well, can we share this through Oxba with all the other school districts, our letter that's going?
So have you not noticed that anytime we send out a document, somehow it makes it to social media? I'm sure that's going to happen as well, right?
Only us too, Elsie, by the way.
But just as a courtesy.
I suppose it should be flattering, but we're the only school district that seems to get publicity.
100%.
On that one particular.
And I'm sure this is going to be no different.
Where is, what's the reporter's name when we meet her?
Oh, she'll get it. Don't worry.
You're off camera. They can't see you. Sorry.
Okay, so we have unanimous agreement. Thank you. We'll get the letter done and out because we want to get people ready for the vote.
Still awake?
Okay, we're up to the report by student board representative.
I hope you have late arrival, Jenna.
I do.
Wonderful. Hope it's at noon.
So in the past two weeks, I've worked with the high school principal, Mrs. Soto, in order to more effectively communicate with high school students. In the monthly newsletter the high school sends out, I have a section where I can update students on what's happening at board meetings so that they can be aware of any important information that they normally miss. Students are also able to watch my student report this way and have information on how they can reach out to me. So I've had several students already reach out to me for clarifications or to ask me to bring up something to the administration. So I'm happy that students know how they can reach out to me when necessary. I've made surveys for each of the classes, but I've only sent one out so far to the senior class. I've really appreciated the responses that I've gotten and the responses bring up some really good suggestions on how students can feel better supported at the high school. So I look forward to meeting with school administration and working with students in the upcoming weeks. A few of my fellow seniors helped guide parents during Parents Night at the high school a few weeks ago, which went extremely well and very few parents got completely lost. And the club fair that was set up during the night was a huge success and all the clubs looked great. And we also had a club fair during school hours later in that week so that newer students could get more involved in the building. And then yesterday, I had the pleasure of visiting Pine Tree Elementary School, where students were very excited to tell me that they are very close to filling up their tree, which is part of Pine Tree's heart program, where students learn how to be helpful and empathetic students. Because of all the amazing work that they've been doing in their classrooms, they're almost ready to win a prize of all-school extra recess. And so the elementary schoolers were also excited to tell me about their writings, their upcoming book fair, holiday boutique, and their orchestra and band concerts. The day I went to Pine Tree, the second and third graders had also just been visited by a fire truck and so they were very excited to tell me about the fire safety techniques that they had learned and were very excited to tell me about all the learning in their classroom. Pine Tree is the only school that I've visited since the last meeting, but I plan to visit Sapphire Elementary School in two weeks and I'm going to start reaching out to the principals of the schools I haven't visited yet so that next meeting I can provide more of a district-wide student perspective.
Excellent. Thank you.
See, Hasler, that's how you do it.
Excellent. I'll take that.
It's never going to happen.
We have reports by Board of Education. I'll give an update on the Audit Committee. We held a meeting yesterday. It was a very good meeting with our outside attorney CPA firm, Noraki and Smith. Really good information. They said that we had very strong results for an initial review. 85% in low risk, 15% in medium-risk items, and this was a risk assessment. It's called an initial risk assessment. So it's kind of their first foray into the district. They assess different areas. So 85 and 15, 0% high risk. So they really gave kudos. So I'd like to thank Mr. Cahill, Ms. Mulrad, and Michael Buffamonte.
You got it.
Because the meeting went well. It was smooth. But also all of the work that the team outside of you as well, because I know there's other people behind the scenes are doing a great job. There were no concerns raised that I was aware of. I thought it was a really good meeting, so that's my report on Audit Committee. We have.
I'll do visitation. We haven't done anything since our last meeting. We are getting together next week, Wednesday at 4:30 with Mr. Berger at the middle school, if anybody in the public wants to join us for a walk-around. Other than that, Patrick, any update on the signage? Because I know that's been asked.
I don't have any update on it. We have put, we have put it out there. We've talked to land architects, so it is in process. I think the one architect that was working on this was not well, like, I don't know if he had COVID. He was out for a while. I mean, it sounds like, you know, an excuse, but he was responsive ultimately when he's back at work. And I think we're very close to having the digital versions and then we would actually bring those and have those, you know, manufactured.
All right, we'll just touch base on it next board meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
I could give an update on the capital project task force. We had a meeting, either the 28th or the 29th. We spoke with the construction manager and the architect along with the committee and Patrick and Andre. We went over the various parts of the project that we're going to need to do work on, boilers, roofs, things like that, that are very essential to our buildings. We're zeroing in on a number that we're going to present to the public and we should have that very shortly. Patrick, I don't know if I'm missing anything.
No, just tonight, we approved a special meeting, you know, so that's what we call the referendum, a special meeting on December 6th. And, you know, it's essential building elements, you know, and that's what we really talk about, that every building needs something, some major component, a roof, a boiler, sometimes multiple things done. It's not, it's not new space. It's not a new gym, not a new pool. It's real basic maintenance that's been deferred for a long time.
And we'll be going out to the public with some more information and having some sessions to inform them.
We're going to start tomorrow. Carol and I have a meeting at 9:00 AM tomorrow to go through the timeline on our public relations. We had a policy meeting. I think we've discussed that a little bit, so.
A little bit.
I don't need any more updates on that.
Okay.
We have a meeting on Monday.
Yep, and we have a meeting on Monday. Hopefully for a robust discussion.
Thank you. Reports by board and central office, Dawn?
I just want to thank everybody that was part of the Board of Ed video with the students. It was awesome to listen to the littlest to the biggest and I think the message was clear about the 10-10 rule at the high school. Welcome to all of our new staff. And thank you to all the speakers that came out tonight to speak to us. Have a good night.
I would also like to thank the video. I put a vote in for, I actually prefer that over the tchotchke stuff. I really enjoyed watching the kids' reaction and some of their answers to the questions. I thought that was, that was really, really enjoyable. I would love to see that every year.
And I would also like to third the comments about the video. It was beautifully done and thank you to everyone who had anything to do with putting it together. It literally brought tears to my eyes. It was so beautiful, so touching. I'd also like to thank Dr. Hasler for his Regents review preparation. I know a lot of work went into that and thank you and everyone in your department who helped you with that. Have a good evening.
The video is definitely a keeper and all those that are off of camera and the staff that are working behind us, like, thank you so very much for being here. I know you all, hopefully Elsie gives you late arrival tomorrow. Taking away from your family is never, you know, the goal, so I appreciate you very much being.
No. As a new board member, he's like, are they always here?
Yeah, I asked, like, it's like, do they have to be? Like, you watch it on video. Like, just watch it tomorrow.
Maybe that could be a discussion, Jeff.
They want to be here.
As she shakes her head, yes.
I don't know, I'm looking at Mr. Kodo like.
I just want to say thank you again. I know it's, that is always the best part, is to see our students, so I certainly am appreciative of that. Thank you to some of the invitations that we've received to come into the buildings and see some of the great activities. I appreciate that while some of them we are not able to attend, I'm happy to get the photo updates and some of the information of what happened because it's hard to get to every single thing, so it's nice to be able to see some of what's happening in the district. And thank you. Have a good night.
I thought the video was great. It's really appreciated, but, you know, I sort of see it the other way. I think personally, I'm probably one of the least important people in this room. I really think that, you know, the studio workers, teachers, TAs, one-on-ones, the food service staff, you know, people, buildings and grounds, they're real, really doing the work that pays off and that's their legacy. I just sit in this chair a couple hours every now and then, but.
The one kid does think we make lunch those dances.
You know what? Even if I made the lunch, that would probably be a winner.
More than one kid.
I thought I missed a memo or something.
Now I have to show up.
I'm not making lunch.
Now instead of, now instead of driving the bus, we need come, come, Aldis, invite us, we'll come cup.
It's really, it's really the entire district staff that really does the work that's needed to make sure that all of our kids succeed. And they're really the ones who should be honored. We're, you know, we're just here. Have a good night.
Yeah, I agree. That video was heartwarming and really the best present we've ever got. Even though I love all the swag, I do think that was the best present we've ever received. And, you know, like Dan said, you guys do a tremendous job. We're, we're just here to support you and help you and hopefully we're doing that. And I appreciate all the speakers coming up and giving their points of view because even though sometimes we may not all agree, we are a board that is united and tries to get things done for the benefit of the students and the community. So thank you all and have a good evening.
Guys brought up a couple points. So the one that said 10-10, the one that said, actually, it said 5-5. That was awesome and selfishly, it was like beautiful to see her up there because that was my flower girl. I've known since she was born. I was being a good lover, so. And the one that said, and the one that said, the one that said tacos, his name is Cameron. We have the same birthday. I've known since he was also a baby. His uncle was my best friend in high school, so.
I thought you were going to say, what's the 10-10 rule? Because you got kids, but you're young.
No, 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 they're not, they're not there yet.
Yeah.
But overall, that, that video was beautiful and you can also tell because he doesn't usually say that much during his part and he had to talk about it, so.
I'm not a talker.
He's not a talker, but he loved it. We all loved it. Thank you very much. And I, I agree. I am, I'd much rather get a video than any other additional swag, so just note. Jenna, thank you. So Jenna has now talked to my daughter twice in Pine Tree along with other kids and my daughter already loves her. So outside of this room, she's still doing a great job and I look forward to seeing everything else that you, that you provide us. And everything else I think was already said. I'm not going to iterate it, other than thank you very much for the video. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
I too loved the video. I just love every opportunity we have to highlight our students, I think, is, is better than not focusing on them. So, and on Board Appreciation Day, thank you all for everything that you do and have a good night.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out again to everybody that helped with the presentation. Truly, I hope that I, I did my best to capture all of the feedback that I got from everybody. Obviously, it's impossible for me to dig as deeply as a lot of that comes, so it's certainly the work of everyone, so thank you. And that's that enough. Have a good night.
Just a couple of things really quickly. Fire Safety Week has been going on, so if you've been driving down 32 or past some of the elementary schools and you've seen a large amount of fire trucks outside of the schools, it's intentional. It's not on an emergency basis, but kids have been out there today. We were down in Smith Clove and they did everything from getting fire hats to watching the firefighters squirt the water all over the place. It was, it was very cool to watch. Red Ribbon Week is coming up in the district. It's the week of October 24th through the 28th, so you'll get more information about that. And then just a reminder from, a communication went out the other day from the district staff that on Friday, the 21st is wear jeans or pink to support breast cancer awareness and any donation that is made will go towards fighting that disease, so thank you very much. Have a nice night.
So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the Class of 1972 for a donation to the high school, $813 donation to the Inspire Success Alumni, for the Inspire Success Alumni Scholarship. And have a nice evening, everyone.
I just wanted to thank the administrators for being so accommodating when I asked to go visit your schools and like speak to your students and then also to everyone who volunteers outside of like their jobs and their families to help students and like make our environment fun outside of just learning, so thank you.
Have a good night.
I want to start by saying that people who take time to volunteer is becoming a rarer group. I don't know if that's a word, but I just made it up, so it is.
It is, no.
It's a rare group of people who commit to an organization or a group, so I just want to take a moment to thank people who volunteer. I'm here because I work here, but you are all here because you volunteer your time and I'm very grateful for that. And don't underestimate the power of the board. The board is a very, very important group of people. And when you work together and we get what we need to do, it is amazing what we can accomplish. For example, our goals presentation, that has been because the board has been very strong on making sure that we have succinct goals for our students because part of your job is to make sure that we give the best education to our students. So you are very important people. I also want to say that the PTA and SEPTA are really important people too because they volunteer their time to support our children. So we are very, very appreciative of everything that you do for our children, so thank you and thank you. I also want to take a moment to thank Eric Kessler. You did a really, really good job, so thank you for that presentation. You were thorough. You were detailed.